Pause recording. Great, okay. So this is the planning board meeting and the first order of business to go with the Camp Moden application. And this is an opportunity for budding property owners to provide comment. They were invited to the meeting. The notices were sent out and this is the time to do so. So is anybody here for that? No one here in the audience is for that, okay? And Jeff, did you have anything you wanted to provide for information?
No, I think I've been able to provide everything that you needed. Talked with, or Hans and I emailed a couple of weeks ago and we should have everything there that that you need.
Okay. Alright, so let's make sure we have everything that we need. There were, I think, a couple of things as of a couple of weeks ago when we met that we were looking for. And do you remember what those things were, George? Yeah, I think we had two things.
Well, one was, and we received it was a mass build for the sub- surface wastewater disposal system.
Right, because that moved.
Hans provided us, or Jeff provided via Hans. And the only other thing was, I think that was outstanding was just the notice from the town to the landowners within 500 feet. Property and that that's been provided and I believe otherwise, you know, we have a complete application on the checklist, all those items, including that one issue with regard to whether or not. I guess sprinklers or some other kind of fire prevention is going to be necessary. That turned out to be a non-issue point to the state car marshal office, so.
Did we receive that notification? The town has it?
I think you may, I provided an opinion from a structural engineer and I believe the fire chief signed off on that about a month ago.
Thank you, Jeff. Alright.
And I also spoke with Fire Marshal.
You did?
Instead of building.
No need. I mean, it makes sense, but I was just asking from a process perspective.
Part of public record at this point.
Indeed, okay. So in this case, I want to make sure that if we, if the criteria has been met from the checklist to consider this complete application, are we now in agreement that this has been made?
Yeah, I think absent the fact that there's no one here from the public to comment or. Provide comments, I think, two remaining items of business. One is, you know, do board members have any issues that they wish to raise? And second, if not, or once those are resolved, move on to the final fraction.
And long. Um, so let's get into those two items then. So Jeff, is there anything more you wanted to present to us tonight with the form, the three of us that we have?
No, it's just great to see you all there.
It's been a long time coming. We get, get through the entire process. Do board members have any questions for Jeff about the application?
No, Jeff's already answered all my questions in the past, so I'm all set.
So we indeed have a complete application checklist. And moving on, I think at this point, if there are no other questions, right? No other questions? We can move on to the Camp Moden Dining Pavilion. The findings of fact and conclusions of law process. Folks bear with us, this is heavily administrative at this point, where we just read stuff and we either agree or not. It was a.
Thank you.
Hans, I'm sorry, do you have another pen?
Oh, I have one here.
Thank you. Thanks. So what was this?
This is like, I know that I'm still working on it. It's being a hard time.
Oh, this short.
Sure, right.
This is. We'll keep this in reserve.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't have a pre-filled one for that, but I do for the showlands. You need a.
I think you've provided the commercial one already. That's your handwriting. It's not mine, because you couldn't read it. We're on. Okay, so, so project name is Camp Moden Dining Pavilion. The applicant Howard Salzberg, this is at 51 Moden Way in Belgrade. Name of the applicant's authorized rep is A. Hudson. Thank you, Jeff Allen, for all your work on this. Project location 51 Moden Way, map 15 lot 007. So planning board members, are we ready to do this? So pursuant to the Belgrade Commercial Development Review Ordinance, last amended on March 17 of 2017, the planning board has considered the application of Howard Salzberg, including its site plan, other supporting materials and documentation, public meeting testimony and other related materials with containing the record. It makes the following findings of fact and conclusions of law. So for the application summary, that A, project summary type to remove two sheds and construct a 50 to 300 square foot dining pavilion. That's, that's something. B, was a waiver requested, waiver request submitted? Do we have any waivers?
We did.
We had one.
Yeah, and, and it's in the body of the application form, but I just realized that we never acted on that, so we need to act on that first before.
Oh, on the waiver?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's tackle the waiver, so.
I can read it.
Please, yes.
And Jeff, please correct me if I get part of this wrong. This is on page six of the application. Waiver being requested for ordinance article 615, section 15A2, the requirement for written assessment of the impact of groundwater. This is because the construction of the pavilion will not create new water demand, simply relocate the demand from the existing dining area. Both areas are served by the same well.
So that's, that's the waiver request.
Request justification.
Are there any questions about the waiver request and the justification? It seems like a pretty. Easy thing to assess and they're not doing anything differently relative to impacted groundwater.
Or, or in terms of increasing demand on the aquifer.
If there are no other concerns about that, if we request I entertain a motion to accept it.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver as requested.
And seconded, so we'll call vote for everybody's awareness. So Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I, to him in favor, so we will prove that waiver. Therefore, that makes that volume business has been taken care of. Let's move on to application review process. So the, the date the application accepted is complete, I'd like to indicate today's date, we go through a finding in the public forum, so it'd be November 3rd. Two, was the site visit conducted? That would be no. Board meeting dates, we've had several. So it's for sure, 11, 3. When did we last meet, Jeff, before that?
Uh, I hang on a second, I have the agendas here. I have an October 6th. A Sep- September 1st and August 4th.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So number three, well, before we get there, I'm indicating, I feel confident that we'd be able to make a final decision today, so I'm indicating today's date is the board rendered final decision on today's date. And next is three, review criteria findings. A, the board finds that the application for the subject project is complete and the applicable application fee has been paid to the town. Is that true? Has he, has that application fee been paid? Just asking. I'm assuming it has been, Jeff, has that, has that happened?
I don't know, that would have been something that Camp Moden did themselves, not, I have not been involved with that.
Okay. Would you? Mind just, you know, I have to do it now, I'm thinking that we just need something. I just want to make sure that this.
We have to, we can prove that if we're, if that's what we're going to do with a condition that it's not effective until we. Fee's been paid.
Yeah. I like that, okay. Alright, so there's a possible condition, but moving on, the application materials, site plan and supporting documentation has been submitted by the applicant and are retained in the project file, maintained by the Belgrade Town Office and the project name. The applicant Kent has requested in writing that the board waived the following ordinance application requirements and review standards. Thank you, and that was article six.
It says here on page 14, these amount of clothes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Article six, I'll reference this, section 15A2. And that was it for. Wave. So, next, the applicant has provided supporting documentation to demonstrate to the board satisfaction that the following ordinance requirements or standards are not applicable due to the proposed project's size, site conditions, design, type, or other unique features. So this documentation includes the following, do we have anything that would fit that? That's something about the.
Not beyond what was in the waiver request.
I'm going to use those same words. Next, the applicant has failed to provide adequate supporting documentation to demonstrate to the board satisfaction that the applicant's proposal meets the ordinance criteria for a waiver from the following requirements or standards, so that. That would be my, and then he's. The board finds that the project will or will not cause unreasonable soil erosion for a reduction in the land's capacity to hold water, so that an unsound or unhelpful conditions exist, reference article six, standards, section three and 13, based on application submittals and the project's design lead plan dated.
That would be August 18, 2022.
And soil erosion control plan dated. Would that be this, because it's part of the same package, can I use the same date?
Yeah. Yeah, because it's part of the site plan.
Yeah. Or the applicant did not submit. So, so we need to vote on this. Right now, that it will not cause. So we'll call, so that it will not cause, so Sarah?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
So three in favor, none opposed. The board finds that the project will not have an adverse impact on freshwater wetlands based on, this should be. Standard language such as. Application materials submitted. In public records. So we'll call vote on the fact that this will not cause, or not have an adverse impact on freshwater wetlands, so Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I, to agrees, that'd be three in favor and none opposed. Case. C, the board finds that the project will not have an adverse impact on a lake, pond, or stream based on the same application materials submitted in public record. So Sarah, that this will not have an adverse impact.
Yes.
Yes.
And I, to agree, so three in favor and none opposed. Next, the board finds that the project will not, or will provide for inadequate stormwater management based on. Same language we used before. Well, I'm going to say that it will provide for adequate stormwater management, so Sarah?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
I, to him in favor, three in favor and none opposed. E, the board finds that the project will not or will provide adequate sewage disposal. And we've talked about this at length, so. Based on application submittals. And public records, so that it will provide, so Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I, to, in favor of that, three in favor, none opposed. Next, the board finds that the project is not or is located in floodplain area and conforms or does not conform to the Belgrade floodplain ordinance based on application submittal materials submitted and the public record. So there was, to my recollection, that this was not in floodplain.
That's correct.
Is not. And that it conforms, it does conform with the Belgrade floodplain ordinance. Okay, so Sarah?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
I, two of the favorites, three in favor, opposed. F, the board finds that the project will not or will result in air or water pollution based on application materials submitted and public record. So that it will not result in air or water pollution. So Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I, to in favor, three in favor, opposed. The board finds that the project will not or will have sufficient drinking water for current and foreseeable needs of the development based on application materials submitted and the public record, so that it will have sufficient drinking water. To meet the needs, so Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I, to in favor of that. H, the board finds that the project along or in conjunction with existing activities will not or will adversely impact the quality or quantity of groundwater based on application materials submitted and the public record, so that. The existing activities will not adversely impact. Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
E, two, three, zero. The board finds that the proposed activity will dispose of all solid waste in conformance with our local regulations and that the type and quantity of waste proposed to be sent to the town transfer facility will not exceed its capacity. Based on application materials submitted and public record, so that it will not exceed capacity. Sarah?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
I, to him in favor, three in favor, none opposed. The board finds that the project will not have a significant detrimental effect on adjacent land uses and properties affected by waste, noise, glare, lighting, fumes, smoke, dust, odors, or their effects from the project based on application materials submitted in the public record, so will not have a significant detrimental effect. Sarah?
Yes.
George? Yes.
I, two in favor, two in favor, opposed. The board finds that the project will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of existing or proposed highway or roads based on the application materials submitted and the public record, so that it will not cause unreasonable highway conditions. So Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I, to him in favor of that, three, zero. The board finds that the project to the maximum extent possible will not have an adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic and archaeological sites, or any public rights for physical and visual access to the shoreline of a water body. Based on the application materials submitted and the public record. So that will not have an adverse effect on those things. Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Two in favor. Yeah, the board finds that the project to the maximum extent possible will not have an adverse effect on significant wildlife habitat in critical natural areas identified by the main, by main, beginning with Habitat Program, Maine Department of Fisheries and Wildlife, Maine Department of Conservation, Critical Natural Areas Program, or the Town of Belgrade Comprehensive Plan. This is based on application materials submitted and public record, so that it will not have an adverse effect on those things. So Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I, to him in favor. Side note, I think we need a comma in there somewhere. Seems to be a long list of things that.
Yeah.
Um, next, the board finds that the project does, or it does not conform or conforms with all other, I'm sorry, so that it conforms with all other applicable town of Belgrade ordinances, including but not limited to shoreline zoning, minimum lot size subdivision, multifamily dwelling, manufactured housing in mobile home park, solid waste and recycling, municipal street and road, adult businesses, supplemental junkyard and auto graveyard and tree ordinance based on application materials submitted and the public record, so that this conforms with all of those other things. So conforms with, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I agree, three, zero. The board finds that the project will not unreasonably increase the concentration of phosphorus in a great pond based on application materials submitted in the public record, so that this will, will not unreasonably cause concentration of phosphorus. So Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I, to him in favor. Next, the board finds that the project will conform to material storage provisions of this ordinance based on application materials submitted in the public record. So it will conform to material storage. So Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I'm in favor as well. The board finds that the applicant. Has sufficient right title or interest. To undertake the development based on application materials submitted in the public record, so that TRI is here, so Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Two. That, the board finds that the applicant. Does provide for safe and adequate parking based on application materials submitted from the public record. So this is about adequate parking. Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Three, zero. The board finds that the project will not, I'm sorry, will conform to all applicable provisions of this ordinance, including but not limited to development standards for specific activities where applicable based on application materials submitted and the public record, so that this will conform to that. So Sarah?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
I, to him in favor of that. This is where we vote. So therefore, the Town of Belgrade Planning Board either approves or does not in the application of. Howard Salzberg. So either approve or deny, so, and there are standard conditions of approval to be included in all approvals. I will make sure to read them, so that it's a matter of public record here. One, construction has not been substantially started within 12 months of board approval, this approval and subsequent permit from the code enforcement officer on Nolan Boyd. Two, the board approval of this project as described above is limited to that described in the application and depicted in the accompanying plan and other application submissions, except to the extent that the board has expressed and indicated in this document that certain depictions may be revised by the applicant without further review and approval by the board. Any changes to the application site plan or the supporting application submissions must receive prior approval by the board, including but not limited to changes in the proposed location and structures, roads, parking, vehicle entrance and exit, well, wells, subsurface wastewater systems, the method of waste disposal and the extent in location of the testing areas, material storage, outdoor lighting and signage, and methods of stormwater and phosphorus runoff. Three, unless a waiver from a specific ordinance standard has been requested by the applicant in writing and approved by the board, the development or use is required to meet all applicable ordinance standards. Four, and this is the final one, this board approval and its associated permit from the code enforcement officer is transferable to subsequent orders of the property, all subsequent orders are required to comply with the conditions of the project's board approval. Okay. Time to vote. Anything else from board members? If not, I'd indicate a motion to approve.
I, place an order to approve this application.
And we'll just get.
We were talking about a condition earlier about the fee.
Yes, we were.
Did you figure that?
We, we actually got word, Hans did some research and we found that it was, but thank you for bringing that up. Yeah. So it was paid. So no additional conditions of approval needed in this case. Got a motion on the floor and seconded, any more discussion? Jeff, any questions?
Not at all.
Okay, super. So therefore, I asked the board to approve this, so Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I, too, am in favor of this, so this has been approved, Jeff. So this goes now to the code enforcement officer who does his, who works his magic for you, okay?
All right, and so I anticipate getting something in the mail, just an email to confirm this, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Very good, thank you folks.
And thank you for all your work on this, thanks Jeff, appreciate it.
We'll see you, Jeff.
Have a good evening, folks.
Bye. You as well. So Jeff, I'm sorry, Hans, I'm going to hand this to you, just one second, so. Thank you. Okay, sweetie, close that. Okay, so officially that ends the Camp Moden business, so we're now on to new business. We've got a couple of shoreline zoning applications. And it looks as though, the first one is for Ernest Warrior at 55 Pickrow Lane. He wanted to remove some stairs and increase the deck size to add a ramp on to deck from a driveway.
Yes, we'd like to put an addition on the existing deck, the set of stairs that go down to the water and then put an extended ramp all the way back to the park. Assess the depth of the driveway.
And I did look at this application online and, and we have provided this in advance too, so. Anybody have any, first initial comments, questions, anything that we want to ask?
Before we go too far, I just wanted to correct all the informations.
Okay.
I don't know if we're still on.
Okay. Craig, are you still there? I think so, right? We're seeing town manager.
Yeah.
You might be, if you're talking, you're muted, just so you know.
Yes, I'm still here. Yes, I'm still here.
You got, you got the email?
I didn't see it.
I sent four documents to Greg Alexander. How is the, the uh, email address that I have?
Oh, yeah.
You got them?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, I couldn't, I couldn't uh, orient them, so you see them straight, so you're gonna have to read sideways then.
Yeah, then I took the computer. Alright, so I'm glad you had them, Craig. Thank you, Sarah. And this, this is over Pickle Lane. Yes. Yeah, okay. And how, how wide are the stairs?
The current stairs are thirty-six inches wide.
In the proposed stairs?
Uh, well, we're proposing for an addition onto the deck that would come out from the current deck. And go to the driveway with an accessibility ramp, so people will be able to access the deck that aren't able to walk into the house.
So it essentially be a wraparound deck?
Correct. Yeah, no, no closer to the water, uh, just wrapping and bringing it up to the driveway longer.
And so it's roughly. Seven feet wide for.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Eighty, uh, eighty wide by twenty-four feet to the length of the house. And then a twelve foot by eight foot section that will connect to the existing.
Gotcha. I'm looking at the hashed um, marks.
Yeah.
On the site plan that you provided.
Yeah.
Catching. Rich, do you have any questions about this?
I had three comments, uh. Septic system report is supposed to be here since it was purchased. Can't see if I got that right. Yeah, it was purchased in six nineteen. And they're after eleven six eighteen, supposed to attach a copy of the septic system inspection. I didn't see that in my package. The other thing I had for comment was. The proposed structure square footage isn't shown on the uh, cover sheet of the application. And thirdly, you can't expand the structure within twenty-five feet of the water. This will be a small but improper expansion. You have to go back based on the setback. Those, and I know the, the short part is just not perfectly straight, but if it was. You can't expand anything within the first five feet of the existing deck, of whatever, so.
Right.
That would have to be cut back at least five feet.
So do you know where, where he's talking about?
No, I don't know.
So, you know, on, let me, I'll try and help you guide there, guide you there, and then maybe Rich, you can jump in. Yeah, you know, the existing deck you got there.
Where that connection with the current, uh, date by fall section.
Yeah, and so then if you take, there's an arrow that says stairs from deck to lawn.
In the current, yeah, the current conditions.
Right, so I think what Rich is saying is that, that, that area, that specific area going towards the water would be going. That would be an expansion towards the water, small, but.
Well, it wouldn't be so much an expansion toward the water, but the ordinance says anything within twenty-five feet of the water cannot be expanded. So this would be an expansion, not more towards the water, but it would be an expansion.
That's.
Square footage.
The area that's prohibited, so.
So Rich, I, I, I had the same question, um, but um, I wasn't quite sure how to interpret. The ordinance in the sense that, if you look at this photo, um, the uh. There were, correct me if I have this wrong. Uh, they're tearing out the existing stairway down from the driveway. They're tearing out the stairs that go up to the existing deck. And I assume they're tearing out everything else underneath it, and it's going to be replaced by this new deck, wraparound deck. So the question is, is that those little couple of steps right closest to the water, is that considered an existing structure?
I wouldn't consider that as existing structure.
Because I, I think.
If anything, it's, it's a, a accessory structure retaining.
Yeah, it's so with respect to the question of expansion, is it an expansion or is it just a replacement? You know, replacing.
I would say anything that's. So here's, here's the existing. With the edge of the steps are, that anything coming misfully. In here, between where the existing stairway is. And toward the lake from this, you know, the stairway could be looked at as, as existing, but. I don't think you can consider the area between the stairway and the corner of the deck. Anything new coming out there would be an expansion. Yes, that's my opinion.
Good workout. Looks like there's about five feet coming off the existing stairs to the, to the edge, where the one maybe about five feet. But then five feet, go over maybe about, what, eight feet or so, so it's, it's five and eight, it's forty-four feet. You'd be at it.
The way I see it, or my interpretation thing is that they could do the expansion on the side. Plus the expansion is wide as the steps are, but it couldn't come closer to the water than the width of the steps.
But.
So that's based on ordinance. That we have.
Yeah.
So look, I'm trying to get this right on, Rich. So when you, I hear you saying is that. The steps beyond the stairway forward. Does not consider. A precedent structure. So they, if they can do that wraparound deck, we'll be starting from this line.
Yeah.
Back.
Yeah.
So thi- this is not considered. Why, what is the terminology for that? Are you saying in the structure?
That's within twenty-five feet, okay. Were your pen is there?
Yeah.
That's within twenty-five, within twenty-five feet.
Yeah. From here, from here up is twenty, from here, this way is twenty.
Yeah.
So they, they uh. The wraparound deck will come all the way through here. This line here. So, Richard's saying that, that there can be allowed only to, to here. So this, this portion of it cannot be.
That's correct.
Cannot be included. So I guess when I'm trying to understand, I'm not questioning, since I was judging. I'm trying to understand, so this portion here. Is not considered a structure like the deck, like a suppressive and structure.
It is Canada. It's within twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
So that piece is twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Then it can expand in twenty-five feet.
So when we say expansion, we meant something to have a roof. This is a footprint right here. That's the wall.
Oh, that is, and you said. Okay, so you're saying there's already a footprint.
Is that, is that considered a footprint?
I, I would consider it part of the footprint of the cabin, the house, and the principal structure. If anything, I see that as an accessory structure.
Okay.
No.
So, so Rich, that's the key, that all that underneath, that's going to be, you know, that. Have the deck would have, as proposed, would have had the deck over it is, because that's an accessory structure, that's why that doesn't count.
That, that's how I see it, it's not part of the principal structure.
That ramp that you see does connect to the deck below.
Of the bottom, the lower deck.
It does, it is attached to the deck below. Yes.
Pardon me, can you come up here and point to what you're talking about, because I don't know anything. I just want to make sure I'm hearing it right. This ramp right here, yeah, that connects, there's a gap underneath there, and that does connect. Okay, okay, so in the, so Rich, to, so Chris, such as.
I guess I still see it as an accessory structure that. Even though it's attached to the deck. Whereas it is not attached to it or.
Well, isn't the deck an accessory structure anyway?
It, well, a deck that's. Physically and significantly attached to the structure is part of the principal structure.
Okay.
I just don't, in my mind, see enough attachment. Uh, of anything uh, that I wouldn't consider this an accessory, that I would. Change my mind about whether this is an accessory structure.
Now, would you have, have you got a picture of this section?
Um, I'm sure I could find one in my.
That will be.
Well, I'm just looking at the definition section of the ordinance. Definition for accessory structure or use.
Please do, yeah.
Okay, instead of the section seventeen definitions accessory structure or use. A use or structure which is internal and subordinate to the principal use or structure. Accessory uses when aggregated shall not be, shall not subordinate. The principal use of a lot. Period. A deck or similar extension of the principal structure. Or a garage attached to the principal structure by roof or, or a common wall. Is considered part of the principal structure. That's the definition, so. Thank you. When you guys take a look at that.
This deck is, is then supposed to be part of the structure. I'm showing the stairwell. It's attached to it. But this, this is not attached. So. It's, there's, there's a deck in front of here that is attached. And this, some of this portion is attached. I'm not sure that this portion is attached.
If you were to consider this. If you did consider attached, there's a space between the stairs and here that is not structured. And you're expanding into the area where there is not structure.
This isn't, and, and the angle coming from the lake, but um, this is a view from underneath the. From over this way, that was in, so here's the, the lower deck, uh, and that is attached to.
Yeah.
Lower section of the house.
Yeah, I, yeah, there's no question about that. The question is in that right-hand corner. Shown in the photograph, whether that's accessory or not. I, I tend to agree with Rich, that's accessory.
Yep, so from right around here going, looking out that way, and then that all connects into, to these lower sections up. To the, that landing area.
So Craig, you're probably catching a lot of this anyway, but what we're looking at there is, is a picture. It shows the, the front corner of the property or the structure, there's a stairway coming down from the deck. Yeah. And, and issue is, what we're wondering about is the area that's towards the lake in front of the. The staircase that's descending.
Yes.
And what Rich is saying is that, what he's interpreting this, and I tend to agree, is that that may be considered a, a. Principal part of the structure, but anything else that's on the ground right now, that's towards the lake, would be considered accessory structure. Because of the space that's there.
But I've thought we've approved stuff, stuff in the past where, whereas um. Then um, you know, pavers and stuff underneath. And so putting a deck above it didn't matter, because. It was already, the ground was already unvegetated.
And that may be the case, but in this case, what, what is that issue is, is the fact that that area that we're talking about here is within twenty-five feet of. The. High waterline of the lake, and the by shoreline zone, you can't have expansion.
A question for you folks.
Yes.
It, it's one of your, is, is a goal of this project to provide handicap access?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, because it doesn't actually come right out and say that, although it's kind of implied.
Yeah, that's for, yeah, accessibility purposes for a couple family members and friends.
Okay, um, when Hans pointed out to me that, uh, to be able to do that. Where you, where you make the turn. Normal handicap accessible uh, building standards might require more space and. The, if we take out, you know, the, the area that's in question here of the deck.
Yeah.
The proposed deck, that to make a turn for him, for a wheelchair, you need what?
Sixty inches.
So we may, may need to.
That's to.
Consider that.
Provision law allows uh, for expansion or whatever for handicap access, uh. I'm not sure, I can't recall whether that would go to the Board of Appeals. Uh, I don't think we have the ability to waive those numbers, but uh. I don't have.
ADA supersedes pretty much everything.
Yeah, but there was also a provision in state law to allows for. Reduction and setback or whatever for handicap access.
So the question then becomes whether we have that authority to do, or whether it has to go to the Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
Since it's a dimensional.
Do you know how far off the stairs go from that?
Anyone here?
Uh, to the end of these stairs or to your start of this.
So the one that Gary gave us way back when was so out of date, I gave the hippo.
Yeah, I did too. Boy, I can't remember, like um, made you standards or something like that, uh, we just, something. Uh, and maybe disposals issue published it, right?
Actually, I don't think so.
No.
No, I, I think it's privately published.
Oh.
Yeah, the third mission, I don't even know if he still does that, but.
Yeah, I don't know either.
But the law, unless it's been changed, clearly be in the most recent version, or Hans had a question, I think, or a statement.
Yeah, the ramp coming out is going to be eighty wide. So you'll have your body to pivot before you turn into the. Uh, it's a thirty-six inch long requirement.
Stairs.
Yeah, so you can pivot on your ramp and then access to that, which will meet the.
Yeah, I, I was just basing on the site drawing and the scale.
Yeah, that's a totally off.
So that looks like would be only four feet, but regardless, something the issue is. Go ahead.
I was going to say, my recollection on the uh, statute I was talking about was to provide access to the structure. Uh.
Oh.
Which in other words, if you could go in the front door, that, that all may not apply to. Access to a deck on the back side. I'm not positive of anything on those lines.
So I guess, um, is there already handicap access to the camp itself?
No.
The front?
No, no. And you couldn't get out the door to the deck, it's only a twenty-six inch door. And it's only. Or six foot two, it's really short, it's, it's a custom.
Well, I mean, it isn't our job to redesign this, but, um, the, uh. I, I only raised it because if, if handicap accessible was an issue here.
Hans, do you have a copy of that? Law book with that. I don't even know when it was last published, but it's called land use laws or whatever, it's about four inches by. Eight inches.
Yeah, something like that, it's a hot trick.
I think I, I have the, you, the version of it, what, what is that you're looking there for? Whatever, so I can search it, what is that we're looking for? I have it right here.
So what term should she use to search in this document? Like, is it handicap accessibility?
Any kind of accessibility in shoreland zone.
I've got the ADA comments right here. For rent, so this is separate from the, the ADA law.
I think whoever said something about, uh, accessibility in the shoreline zone. That may bring it up.
Accessibility in the shoreline zone. So getting back to what we have in front of us here. So Hans, if, if I understand what you've said correctly, the ramp that goes along the side of the camp, that's fine, right? And then if, if the applicant were to. Uh, consider having the four foot wide. Turns from the side to the front. That would meet then the deck. Its current location. Um, without the four feet going towards the water. Would that be sufficient from a?
Yeah, with the eight feet ramp coming to the side of the house. Then they need a minimum thirty-six inch for on. As they call, why, just for lack of a better term, and they've got four feet with the stairwood.
Right, that would meet that. That would meet that part. And so from our perspective, based on our previous discussion, the, the, the small amount of, of decking. That is being proposed that we think is in question, and I tend, I, I agree with Rich that it would be considered. Something that couldn't be done, uh, in that twenty-five foot area. So. I think it's where we are with that, so.
Well, that and knowing if we, who has authority in town to. Deal with it, you know, is it us or is it?
Right.
But, I mean, at the moment, we have an incomplete application because we. We don't have the required, uh, uh, subsurface wastewater disposal system inspection to ensure that that's not failing. That's required for any expansion.
It's, it's a report by who?
You, uh, by a certified, uh, septic system inspector. There's a list on the state website, uh, under the state point program, um.
Wouldn't it have been done as part of that transaction?
Well, it might have been done as part of the, usually banks require it, but.
Yeah, we didn't have anything, or nothing was done when we purchased the.
Okay.
Is, is it part of the, uh?
Yeah, it's under the driveway there.
And, and the second item that Rich raised earlier, uh, it doesn't have a number, but. Once this all gets sorted out, uh, we'll need to know what the total. After construction, uh, square footage. Yeah, 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 you, you have the existing, the four hundred eighty-three square feet. Based on what you're proposing, I don't know. The Brian says you're gonna add two hundred fifty-six square feet.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, so that total would, that, I mean, it's just a matter of filling in, like, once we get to that.
But is that square footage with the entire deck, or is that with the piece that?
Well, it, once we know. Did you find it?
Yeah, we'll make sure we get back. Okay.
Title thirty A is land use laws.
Yes, it is.
So it could be that we find out that, that, um, another entity can approve something that we can't, right? As we were talking about.
I guess, I, I, I'm not familiar with this statute. I, I, all, except to the extent that I knew that there was. A, um, state law that preempted the other dimensional requirements. If, if it was solely for the purpose of providing handicap access, access to a camp. Structure within the shoreline zone.
Yeah, and in my mind, if handicap access is necessary, if it needs to be modified for handicap access, access. There's a provision for doing, what I'm just not sure is. Other than ADA and its actual state law, what is exactly that provision?
Hans, have you been to the, the site?
I have not done the site this time. They added the photos, um, the back door, I never said the question.
Yeah, and it's safe to say the applicants that, that provisions are not in shoreline zoning.
Pretty sure it's not, it's actually in the title thirty A. I'm not really a voting member tonight, uh, because Craig is here, you have four people. People wanna hang around for five minutes or talk about something else, I can go at home and get the book and, uh, we might be able to figure it out, but.
That will could be called growth management program elements. I got thirty-eight definitions.
It's not like shoreline zoning statute, right, Rich?
I don't believe it is.
So it's part of the main statute. It is part of the main statute. Lucky guys, got a lot of money and that was revelations, so what is it that we want from there?
Handicap access.
Handicap access.
So I have the book right here.
Good man.
Thank you, Craig. Are you sifting through the pages?
I'm looking at the contents right now.
Okay.
So what did you say was under thirty-something?
Did you hear that, Craig, thirty?
I think you're looking for part two, subpart four, ordinance authority and limitations.
If I may offer something, I'm looking, I'm, I'm on the plane worth the town of Harlem. We don't, we haven't signed the new shoreline zones, I don't know if this matches exactly with yours. But there is a reference in this draft copy that talks about accessibility. And it references thirty A MRSA section forty-three fifty-three A. I think it expresses what you're referring to. Thank you, I'm trying to find what section it might be in. It's under variance appeals, that's where it's on.
Yeah, okay.
Forty-three fifty-three A's on page one seventeen on the book.
Thank you, Craig.
Can you say that again, Craig?
It's page one, uh, forty-three fifty-three A. Code enforcement officer authority for disability structure permits. And it's on page one seventeen in this planning book.
Can you read what it says?
Now, withstanding section forty-three fifty-three. A municipality by ordinance may authorize a code enforcer officer to issue a permit to an owner of a dwelling. For the purpose of making a dwelling accessible to a person with a disability who resides in or regularly uses the dwelling. If the permit requires a variance, the, the permit is deemed to include that. Variance solely for the installation of equipment. Or the construction of structures necessary for the access. To or egress from the dwelling for the person with a disability. The code enforcement officer may impose conditions on the permit, including limiting. The permit to duration of disability or to the time that the person with a disability lives in the dwelling. All medical records submitted to the code enforcement officer and other documents submitted. For the purpose of describing or verifying the person's disability are confidential. The purpose of this section terms structures necessary for access or egress from a dwelling. Includes ramps and associated railings, walls, roof systems necessary for the safety or affecting, effectiveness of ramps. For the purpose of this section, disability has the same meaning as physical or mental disability under title five, section A forty-three.
So I'm beginning a screen picture of this and sending it to everyone.
So Craig, thank you for the research, Sarah, thank you for the research, I was looking at our ordinance. On page, bottom of page sixty-nine and seventy. It talks about Craig just was talking about. So it's under variance, it says notwithstanding section sixteen, et cetera, et cetera, about. The Board of Appeals or the code enforcement officer authorized in accordance with all that Craig just said. May grant a variance to an owner of a residential dwelling for the purpose of making that dwelling accessible to the person with a disability, et cetera, et cetera. So to me, when I read this. I'm thinking the planning board doesn't have the authority, but Board of Appeals or the CEO could. We, are we on the same page with that? And this is under, just so you know, page sixty-nine, variance appeals, uh, section of the.
Would it be something that, uh, in this case that, uh. Hans can grant the, the waivers, whatever. But they're also asking for an expansion. Of a, the, the deck on the side, is it something that both the planning board and the CEO? Should be involved in, and we approve the, the deck and Hans approves and, I don't know.
Yeah.
The deck is more than the access structure, the expanded deck is a deck.
My thinking, and, and, you know, you guys, people may have other opinions about it, which is fine. I'm thinking what, what we could take action on, once the applicant submits some more information that we still need. That George has been able to, you know, point to, and I think Mr. Pori, you know what we're talking about. So once we have that completed application, I think we could take action on an application that was deemed, um, complete. Relative to the deck, and if that still did not satisfy the applicant. I think that then the CEO could then consider the various part relative to the. The idea of providing handicap access. That, that's what I'm thinking, does that make sense?
It, it, it does, in my mind, if, if all they were doing was providing handicap access. Then I think Hans could take care of the whole thing, this is more than handicap access. It's a, a deck that's bigger than what's necessary for handicap access, so.
It is, and I think you may have, may or may not have heard, but I think George asked if there was a. Another way into the dwelling, that what would be, that would need handicap accessibility standards, and there is not.
Yeah, they can't, can't do that now, right?
So that's what I think I heard, my.
Yeah, that's right.
So I think the intent is to provide a method for both able and disabled persons to have access to the house, is that correct? I don't want to put words in your mouth. That's what I'm hearing so far. So for the benefit of your time, I wanna honor your time, thanks for coming in tonight. Just wanna make sure we understand, so we still need a couple pieces of information. And do, do you have Hans's phone number, or if you need it? I would, I would, I would.
We're also gonna make subtle dimensions on your drawing.
Yeah.
The whole house, yeah, for everything.
George, are you missing?
Uh, no, I, I'm just a little confused on how, I, I wanna make sure everybody's clear, myself included. The, uh, so are we saying that the applicant has to make a decision on whether they want a deck or a handicap accessible ramp?
Think so, I think what we're getting at is, the part that is in question. Is the part that's within twenty-five feet of the water.
Right.
Other than that, this project is perfectly, in my mind, perfectly.
Right.
Doable. But they're asking for the deck, which is more than was necessary for access. But once you get to the twenty-five foot line. If he's gotta make it bigger to come around, then that's something that Hans or the feels board needs.
Right, but we still have to, Hans doesn't have the authority to approve the deck that's on the side.
Right, that's what, that's my point.
Okay.
We either need to do the deck on the side, and then let Hans deal with it after. For the other piece, or. It's, part of it is our responsibility, and it may, and I guess the, use the word may. Have to have Hans deal with it in terms of the accessibility or the.
For the rapper.
Expansion rapper.
Well, that certainly would be easier from your perspective than having to go to the Board of Appeals, which is the alternative.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
That makes, I, I, I just wasn't clear, that's all.
So does it make sense that for the applicant, they know they have to supply a little bit more information on, on, on this? That we would see them once again, right, there'd be some consultation with Hans, who knows about this, right? And then we'd be looking at, at something that's not the same as exactly as what we're seeing now, would be some modifications. And then, uh, we, I think we understand that there would be, uh, a role for the planning board to approve. The deck. And then not going in twenty-five feet of the. Watermark, and then anything else that would be accessibility would probably.
So if we stop the deck at the edge of the stairs, there's no issues at all?
I, I think if you stop right there, we don't even need all the paperwork for the disability thing.
I think, I think you're correct.
Yeah.
Now, and one might argue the four feet that starts right where the, that is. You need thirty-six inches and four feet is greater than thirty-six, but is it enough to satisfy? That's the thing. Yeah.
So, uh, I guess by code, you, you need, uh, this sixty feet, sixty inches, isn't it?
I think.
That they're exceeding that.
Yeah, by code, you only need thirty-six. And they're offering forty-eight.
Right.
And that's still within, that's still, that's not going to interrupt the twenty-five feet foot mark that we're talking about. And so conceptually, that would be good.
Yeah.
Right? It would just be up to the applicants to figure out.
So it would just have a jog in the deck, that's what it would have. Instead of getting all the way out.
So that, and then the other portion is that if, if that clears your needs and you're good with that, then you avoid all the extra work of having to do with the CEO. And then do we have to meet the, the state law? Because the state law says that the applicant will have to submit medical records and.
It wouldn't be.
That would be for the variance, but they're just going to use steps and they're, they're good.
Right. If, if they're not going to get on the variance path, then it's just showing zoning application stuff for us.
All right. Just want to make sure that you don't come back and then we'll missing information for you.
They're going to come in here to the planning board with a raised deck, showing the deck. And then, and then, and then what we're going to approve, the deck coming out the, what, eight feet, whatever it is. And then it starts on the side of the building and then it goes another four feet, which covers the width of the steps around the front and off to the side. And then you're going to go, then you're going to go to the code enforcement officer and he's going to make a decision increasing the deck size, that small piece here, which would, and would be substantiated by the accessibility handicap law, right?
I would agree with most of everything you said, except for the fact that they don't need to.
They don't need to.
But they may want. That, that, that would be their option. They, they wouldn't need to because the four feet that's in, that, that's proposed, that's part of what's proposed right here meets the ADA requirements.
But, but, but who had the authority over that? Code enforcement officer.
You would have authority to issue a variance, but technically speaking, you may not need a variance because what they're proposing is in excess of the minimum requirements that ADA has for handicap accessibility.
Which is code enforcement officer. Prove, sorry.
If the variance were needed, yeah.
We don't have to say anything within, when we approve, when they submit the applicant, we approve the application.
I would agree.
Unless we went into the.
And there's a question in my mind, would, if he granted approval for something, is that actually a variance? I don't think it's a variance, is it? Or is that how the?
I think it is.
Does it say variance?
Yep. I'm under variance appeals, item D.
There was a lot said in that statement, you know, even including limitations such as for the lifetime of the handicap person or the.
Right.
You know, the need of the handicap person. But they're not going that route. It's covering the stairs, the existing steps with deck exceeds the minimum handicap requirement. So that four feet that they're going to get and the eight feet that they're going to approve or allow gives them everything they need.
So that way, just amending that will allow, come back to us for approval.
Yeah.
Presays them.
Unless we want to have the other thing that will require.
I mean, if they're going to try to bring a bed in there.
Yep.
I don't think we need a bed.
Exactly. So. Yeah. So, Mr. Pori, you understand where we're going with this, right?
And do I send this back to you when you get it revised?
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll talk. I want to do the site visit.
I apologize. This is not, this is stuff waiting a long time than I expected.
It's the first time we were in car. Yeah. Yeah, I don't recall. I don't recall a variance.
Well, or it was just a simple ramp into the, directly into the camp.
Right.
One time we had that, and it wasn't within twenty-five feet.
It was further back.
Yeah, it was further back, so.
That's kind of niche.
Yeah, so.
Where's the way? I thought, I thought that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you get to rock first?
No.
No.
Faster, faster, faster.
I just on the leg. You guys look busy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, got you.
Thanks for being.
So.
Table.
Yeah.
Uh, pending additional information.
Grab a motion to table until we obtain more additional information.
I second.
And second, any more discussion? You know what we want? You know what you have to do?
Yep.
Awesome. So all those in favor of tabling this, so we'll do a roll call vote, right? So we've got, so Pete? Yeah, Sarah?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I too am in favor and Rich, we're not asking you to vote only because we have a full.
I hope, I hope I can support you.
Thank you, thank you. Five in favor, none opposed. Thanks, everybody. It's been tabled. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a very nice night. Okay, what was next? Let's see. Is it Mandy Butler, Dear Go Engineering, representing Matthew Stalso? This is nineteen ninety-one, the best road proposed used car law.
Close. Matthias Stalso. Matthias is here tonight with us, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Questions?
I'm sorry. It was spelled out Matthew.
Oh, oh, really?
Okay, on my.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So. Yeah, George, I can share this one.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so where are we?
Right across the road.
Okay, that's my thought.
Yep, it's, it's across the driveway, not the road, a hundred yards or less.
Okay.
It's not just across the road. If you'd like me to orient you, I do have a large map here if you wanted to give your.
Yeah, please.
Orientation, just to get you clarified where we are. If you look at this plan on the, on the, on your left, this is the existing site plan, just to give you an idea of what's there currently. This is the garage that's out there currently. It's like a twenty-six foot by forty foot garage, open door on the roadside. Then there's just another small shed that steps back there closer to the road. So just a little loop driveway that goes around there. So that's the existing conditions. The gray drops off pretty hard on that backside going into that bog down back. So what we're proposing to do, the state of Maine requires anybody doing a used car sales to have five thousand square feet of display area. In other words, you can't just set up a used car sales and have four or five vehicles on your front lawn and qualify with Maine. So that's what's the challenge on this, is we've got to expand the gravel yard enough to provide that five thousand square feet. If we didn't have to do that, we'd probably just live with what he had. He's only looking to have what, eight or ten vehicles maybe at the most out there is what he's planning on, so it doesn't need that much, but state of Maine requires it. It's part of their stipulations. So what we are, the main part of this expansion here, the, the heavy blue outline, that's what that five thousand square feet is. So we're trying not to get any further into the woods because the gray drops off pretty sharply off that back edge, goes down into the wetlands, protected wetlands and so forth. So we're trying to keep everything compact as we can without doing that. So we've got that five thousand square foot area here is what he's doing. So that's where his vehicles will be displayed, a little bit of room for some employee parking to have himself and one or two employees and then a few spots out front here for handicap parking is the intention. So it's, it's really not expanding all that much. Hold the footprint this there. You're not planning to get into, to trees at all. The, the main thing that I guess we've got to get, I guess your blessing on, is your ordinance basically states that once you get over seventy-five hundred square feet of impervious area, then you've got to start providing phosphorus treatment. The current site is just below that limit, so they didn't have to provide it previously. They're about seventy-one hundred square feet of impervious area. What he's planning on expanding is only putting about twenty-eight hundred, so he's adding maybe three thousand square feet, twenty-hundred, three thousand square feet. So he's not getting too much more than what's there, but a little bit more. So what we've done is we've provided stormwater treatment for that, leaving the phosphorus requirements. So that's what's represented here with this smaller blue outline and heavy, heavy blue is, is representing that additional twenty-eight hundred square feet coming in, being treated in an underground soil filter. So one of the big questions, I guess for you folks is, are we okay with not treating the original seventy-one hundred square feet? If we do need to treat it, that comes with another set of issues because that forces us to build an underground soil filter on a steep slope and actually disturb quite a bit of woodlands and come actually closer to, closer to the wetlands than what we already are. So in my mind, you're harming the environment to try to protect the environment. It's kind of what's taking place. So we'd prefer not to have to do this here if, if we can get your blessing on that, say, okay, we can, can kind of exempt the original seventy-one hundred square feet and only provide treatment for the new area, then or equivalent of the new area. That's, that's probably one of the key things I think that we need to resolve. And then there's other criteria you've got, such as lighting and other things that we need. Another thing that we do have, that we, that we're working on, your ordinance requires any parking to be set back five feet behind a right of way line, which is pretty typical. But in this case, the right of way is sixty feet from center line, so it's huge right away. And the reason they have that, so I guess the old road, some of you may remember that the old road, I'm not sure when it was redone, fifties, I think, that the new road shifted this way, but they kept the old right of way way over there where it is. It's kind of, if you should look at the shed across the road, it kind of, I think it splits the shed. Yeah, it goes right through the shed that's out there. So we've talked with MDOT and they're agreeable to allowing us to build within the right of way because it is so wide. We've said, we've applied for an opening permit. I've had communication, verbal communication, and actually got an email from them today saying, yeah, we're okay with that. We can grant you the approval. The one thing we don't like, that they don't like, is the underground soil filter being, we're about sixteen feet into the right of way. They don't like that, so we've got to get that shifted back or else buy ten to fifteen feet of land from them, and they're agreeable to that.
Of course.
Yeah.
Funny thing.
Yeah, yeah. They're agreeable. In, in that underground soil filter, there's only two feet deep, so it's no worse than any ditch or anything else that, you know, driveways. There are dozens of driveways that create greater hazard to that than that underground soil filter. But I do have an email that I, that I gave to Hans from MDOT saying that they're okay with the, the concept of this being over the right of way, and I don't have the permit in hand yet, so better resolve that underground soil filter. So.
I get a question of George. Regarding the stormwater runoff and stuff, what was the issue that we had back a while ago? Was it the town office when it was being built that they, somebody didn't need to do a whole lot of stormwater runoff stuff because it was determined that the, it drained into the wet hole down here?
Yeah. No, that's exactly right. So when this building was built and the whole complex was built, they had to go through this ordinance and I mean, you, you know, got here while it's still light, saw that there's some stormwater basins, but in terms of phosphorus, you notice is in the Mezalonsky watershed topographically, the drainage from this site goes to this roadside ditch, which in turn goes under the intersection over here and it goes to an interim pool, you know, that's only there in the springtime. A few ducks use it with no outlet.
Oh.
It all drains the groundwater.
Well, it's a brown pool.
Yeah, well, yeah. It's not a bernal pool. No, I mean, clearly, I'd be shocked if it was a bernal pool, but. Well, it's not geologically a kettle hole either, but anyway, it's a hole. And, and the town, oh, well, the towns engineers requested a waiver justified on the basis that the stormwater doesn't reach Mezalonsky Lake or any tributary thereof.
So it's infiltrating, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if that would be the case here or not. I'm not familiar with where the ditching and stuff goes, but.
Yeah, all of this site will go back the other direction, unfortunately, goes into the complex behind.
Is that what you were thinking of, Rich?
I, I was thinking of the, and I don't know whether we have a concern about stormwater going into the kettle ponds and increasing water quality, if you will, in the kettle ponds, but I'm convinced that the runoff from that place either goes to the pond down here, the wet hole or whatever you want to call it, or to the kettle bowl ponds, which go nowhere to. We do have concern about kettle bowl ponds and water quality.
Yeah, and, and that's a unique natural area, of course, so we, we have some, you know, that's going to have.
That's there.
Right, yes.
Directly behind. So, so you're saying that kettle ponds really have no outlet, is that what you're saying?
Why not? So you have no outlet?
Yes, I'm pretty certain that's the case as well.
That's, that's the interpretation for this case.
Yeah. But it, but it is a unique natural area and they, they've already, they've provided us information and feedback from the, from the Natural Areas Program at Department of Conservation to that effect.
Can, can I quickly ask a question? Is just all this one panel over my head a little bit? So what is a berman pond? A berman pond?
A bernal?
Berman pond.
Oh, bernal pool.
Yeah, pools.
That we've talked about before that doesn't exist here in town? It's a, it's a depression in the ground.
Yeah.
Where water will collect in the springtime.
Yeah.
And sometimes if they're big enough, then certain critters like that, like salamanders and certain types of coag, frogs like that kind of environment. And so they grow in these pools, which are there in the springtime, but then as the pools dry up, they find other places to navigate to.
Yeah.
If the pools, if the bernal pools are large enough, the DDP gets interested and they start calling them significant bernal pools and they become protected, you know?
Salmander frog areas.
You know?
Yeah, I, I mean, in one sense, this would not be a bernal pool simply because it has a inlet.
Right. Yeah, if that's the source of water, it may not be, and if it drains too rapidly, if it's only holding water for a short period of time.
They're really cool if you've never seen one in the springtime. They're really cool.
Yeah, they're just, yeah, the springtime, just these places where you go out in the woods and see this little pond where it's not, normally not a pond, and it doesn't necessarily need to be big, like, like be the size of this, half the size of this room.
But then, then through the fall, winter, the day out.
Yes, correct.
This, the bigger.
Right now, they're probably moving water because a lot of rain had.
The bigger question that you asked, though, is can we skip, you know, only apply the stormwater management requirement to the expansion beyond the existing facility versus the entire facility that you're proposing, you know?
Right.
And I, I'd have to think about that, but my first inclination is we cannot.
Right. That's how I was thinking, too.
First off, this was, that site was originally approved only for the construction of sheds. That's the only approval received from the town under this ordinance. The, other than your, until I read your application, I didn't even realize that anybody ever did car repairs there before. But the, because way back, that was part of the residence next door.
Yeah. So you're talking about change in use? When we get that?
Well, yeah, and, and that would be accommodated with the application that they put forward. But it, my understanding of the ordinance is that it's for stormwater of the entire, generate from the entire proposed development. You know? What we do. But, you know, the. But you know, your point is a good one, you know, uh, of um. Given the limitations of that site.
Right, yeah, it's, it's unfortunate that we're, you're, if you look at the footprint of that underground soil filter. Because it's on that slope like that, we're disturbing twice as much area as that pond requires because we went down that slope. Another thought I have, is there any other, you know, for example, a town site, is there any potential trade off where you say, well, let's not treat that? Because it's such a sensitive area, but let's, it's like, I know it's the more harvest driveway, for example, it doesn't look like it's hitting underground soil filter. Would the town be able to provide a treatment at another location for that?
Or you're asking us to think outside of the box and Belgrade's not real good at that.
Way outside the box, maybe beyond your authority to.
Yeah, no, exactly, yeah, uh, outside of the box thinking is not how we roll here. Um, the uh, uh, actually where I was heading was whether there would be an option to do a non-engineering option. Like. I assume this is probably the area that you're talking about, that larger uh infiltration area.
Yeah.
Um, I, I believe that's what it is, isn't it?
Yes.
So just bringing the stormwater there and allowing it to infiltrate in the natural buffer, keeping it as a natural buffer.
I would be perfectly happy to do that.
Well, I'm asking whether it would work. I mean, our organs has a provision for that.
Okay, it's steep slopes, that's, that's the.
That's steep slope.
Yes, relatively steep slope. It's not as steep as it is directly behind the, the shop. Uh, you'd want to be cautious. You could probably barely walk down over that. It's, it's. It's a pretty steep slope. You could probably make it down, but you'd be helping pump and trying to get back up over it, uh, right there behind the shop. And you know, in this area here, we're looking at putting it out beyond that where it does get a little flatter, well, nowhere's near flat. It's probably. I haven't measured it, something on the order of a, I think the light out of contour shows something on the four to one slope average.
Yeah, I, 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 with, you know, slope versus infiltration rates and stuff, you know, I'm, I'm not an engineer, so I.
Yeah, I mean, certainly would be happy to do that if, if you'd be agreeable to it. We can somehow slow the water net down, maybe do a. I guess one thing I might offer is uh to do a level lip spreader, which basically spreads that flow out because it's. It would allow that flow just, we might do say something like a fifty foot long stone burn perhaps. So that as water comes off that area, it kind of flows along this level. Area and then just kind of sheet flows down.
Yeah.
That might be a solution that'd be less impactful.
Well, the project that you saw us prove earlier, um, that's what, that's their proposal, except that they don't have the steep slope. Into, you know, wood, woodland.
Right, but that may be a fair compromise here, uh, just, you know, where. You've got this uh unique natural area down there and we'd rather not get close to it.
Yeah, cause that'll, that'll be something we'll need to look at real carefully.
Yeah, it's just such a tight site, uh, to try to meet.
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak for the other board members, but I, I just threw that, I just wanted to throw that out. It's maybe it's something for you to investigate.
Missing where this, this is close to here, but.
Yeah, it's across the road. If you go down the driveway here and take a right. Okay, yes, well, right.
Right at the end of the driveway, basically.
So go down the main road. Yep, take a right.
Okay.
And just a couple hundred yards up the road, this building, it's a green garage, you know, similar color to this, maybe a little darker than this. Um, sits there, it's that site right there.
So it's right across from the way you stood at the Christmas shop thing?
Um, yeah, not that far. It's kind of between here and there. Google Maps, it's pretty much, it's right diagonally across the street.
Hans will be sending a butter notice to the town.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's an old road there over there, right? What you always. Well, the, the road used to be over that way farther. I don't know how far. The right of way is over there, pretty piece of, probably part of it. That's all, can take credit for that. That's a good point.
So that structure, that structure, I'm sorry, is green, you said?
Yes.
So Sarah, one might, something about the right one, might, one might think it's associated with the other structure. Decided it.
Yeah.
But it's not.
If it wasn't for our friends, you might think it was part of that residential yard.
Yeah, exactly. In fact, you're right. We've got a photo in there from nineteen seventy-four that we tracked down. It looks like maybe it's a swimming pool.
Right, that's right, yeah.
You remember that?
So.
With Joe Strickland's garage.
Right, many years.
Joe Strickland's garage, Harry lives over there and Joe worked on.
Right, school bus driver.
Yeah, okay.
So was any idea when this building was built?
When?
This, this garage.
The one that's there, I don't know.
Yeah, I think.
I saw a reference from. Email sent out to D E P relates to the aquifer and so forth. And basically they said because it was done, I think in two thousand four. Before the ordinance came into play, that it was exempt, which grandfathered this obviously, aquifer concerns.
Oh, okay.
And that email, that email's in there.
With regarding the sighting.
Yeah.
Proximity to the three hundred private well.
Used car sales, any, anything that may have, probably products and so forth. Ordinarily would have some strict criteria connected to it, but because it's been, because it's been there since two thousand four.
Good, Rich, Hans, do you have a copy of the shoreline zoning map in your office?
The map?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of the things that I see as a potential problem with the uh project and I. Guess I question, I want to see the map, see that I. I did it, the uh. The shoreline zoning map piece that you submitted, it shows that it's being in limited residential district. If that's the case. I, I have a hard time believing it's an actual shoreline zone.
Yeah, I don't believe it's in the shoreline zone. I'm guessing that was accidentally taken from the G I S layers from our comprehensive plan.
It may be, but.
But, but I, I agree with you, Rich, that it, I don't believe it's in the shoreline zone, so we should. Oh, cause those kettle hole ponds are, it may be there. I haven't come across it.
It would be big.
Yeah, it's. Jesus, but all we want to do to get that updated.
I know.
Nothing mentioned the legal problems.
So, these are, these in the back are the kettle ponds.
Yes, yeah.
So why, why, why do you guys call it kettle ponds?
Because when the glacier uh receded, creating the es, the escor and the sand gravel aquifer that the highway basically sits on top of. Uh, they had big chunks of ice sat there and uh, and they melted later. And formed those depressions that filled with water. They don't have a inlet, they don't have an outlet, and they have real unique uh. Uh, bog plants, bog vegetation. And the water is very acidic.
So you get, yeah, you get a geologic explanation as, as well as um. Plant definition, so it's specific.
Yeah.
So habitat.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me ask this question, and it might be a little bit, might help us a little bit, a little bit of a compromise. And so in that case, the water does not flow to Mesononski. Right, so therefore we don't have to treat for phosphorus. That allows us to scale these back a little bit. I understand we still need underground soil filters, but these have been enlarged a little bit to account for phosphorus. And if that is not the case, then, then I think that might.
Would, would you not have to drain, would you not have to treat for phosphorus? Is the water body, whether or not it goes to Mesononski.
Yeah, um.
My, my mind wouldn't matter.
But I could be wrong.
I would, I would, I would need to review.
Typically, but I guess I'm not sure about the kettle pond. That's a, a very unique situation. Typically, we only need to treat for phosphorus. For ponds and lakes that are most at risk, which you have a lot of in Belgrade.
Right, right, and, and possibly only great ponds too.
Right.
So, so, so you made me honest with you. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure.
It wouldn't eliminate them, well. If we don't need to. I guess, I'm not sure, I haven't read your code exhaustively, so I don't know if there's a provision. Typically, if this were not, if this were just a, a D E P project. And not, if your pond weren't initially set for some other town. D E P wouldn't require anything for treatment on a project this small. It's only when you get up like an acre of impervious that they start getting concerned. So, so my thought would be, maybe we don't even need to provide the treatment. We're certainly willing to do something, whatever we need to be appropriate. But I think the underground soil filters could be sized back. Maybe we, maybe we stick with the, the small one there, size that down a little bit. It's probably. I want to say forty to fifty percent bigger than it needs to be under typical guidance, but we size it up because to meet the phosphorus rules. And on the other side, other product, other, other great soil filter, that's also sized up, maybe fifty percent larger than it used to be to meet phosphorus rules. So that would help us if we would scale those down.
Um, here's another thought for you to um. Play your engineering skills to um, is um. Have infiltration trenches around the parking area. I, I, I'm still ruminating on how to avoid doing more damage.
Right.
Um, and, and threatening that natural areas.
Right.
So the, you know, again, uh, well, that would be semi-engineered, I guess you'd say, but um, versus. The more sophisticated system that you have laid out on your drawing. We, we've approved that before in an auto repair shop on one, uh, eight and eleven.
In the aquifer area at all?
No, it wasn't, but. For me, the stormwater is the issue with the aquifer, the, the high yield sand gravel aquifer, the, the, you know, w- w- we'll come to this, but you know. How you're proposing to deal with the storage of waste oil, um, you know, have any solvents, antifreeze, all that. You know, what best management practices you're going to be proposing. That's for myself, that's where my focus will be. Rather than on stormwater uh going into the aquifer.
Um, the other thing that they weigh into a little bit is kind of a little bit of a trade off. Uh, he would like to pave it eventually, maybe not the first year. That also allows us to scale back the phosphorus treatment, or we get phosphorus, or we give it a phosphorus treatment altogether, perhaps. It's agreeable to that, so that allows us to scale back some as well, so. You would be too without uh. And too many trees in this, you know.
Rich, were you able to answer your question, right?
I answered my question based on this matching what's in the application. But I don't think this is the most recent, this shows it as being in the shoreline zone. And it shows it as under residential. But I'm thinking that, and it says, this map was adopted in nineteen ninety-seven. And there's some. Red writing says revised two thousand four. But, and then there's writing all over it from. This is why we're updating the map. I, I don't think this is the most recent version. Is it, one, I, I can't believe that's quote legally shoreline zoned area. I don't think there's ten acres of non-forested wetland.
No, unless some prior planning board added it.
Well, yeah.
And why they would have added it as limited residential versus resource protection is beyond me.
Right.
That makes that.
Other than the fact it was uh right on the town's. Commercial area.
Yeah.
But then you think if they were going to do anything, be limited commercial. Go back to the comment. I'm not sure we. This, I'm not sure is the, the, the correct map. And if anything. It's more restricted than what I think the, the real map should be.
K B Cog, I think, updated that. Or did K B Cog do this one?
No, this is Sewell Company.
I'm going back in time.
I thought we had our shoreline zoning map inside a frame.
Thought we got one updated from Sewell.
We did.
More recently than two thousand four.
Yeah, we did, with the replace the one that was all faded.
Right.
Which you worked on, Rich.
Right, you provided, um, cause I remember we, we looked at some areas that we thought were in question.
Right.
We presented that information and asked for an estimate, how much would cost to basically reconcile some parcels.
And, and I know we had it updated. Uh, I retired in two thousand ten. This thing says two thousand four.
And we've done.
And I know that we had revised map. Since I was, I was on the planning board, so I.
Yeah. So one that's on the website, the same one that's there?
I do not know. That is a possibility.
That's the one that's on the website.
Maybe, uh. Yeah. Hans, would you be willing to ask?
Yeah, there's gotta.
Okay.
Check with the town manager. See if um, there could be communication with Sewell. To double check or verify the latest, greatest map that they provided for us.
It does, but all they did was digitize that and add, add it into the overall map, but.
I just have, we're working on economic, you know, many years before changing name. This is all uh, not residential, well, limited business here. That's the only idea.
Yeah, village district.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, no, you're right about that. Um, but whether it addresses the question of whether or not those kettle hole ponds. Are part, are, are covered by, you know, were included into shoreline zoning at some point in the past.
Right.
I don't know. But would answer that question or not. Because, you know, under the state minimum standards, those normally wouldn't be covered. Under shoreline zoning.
We, we should at least try, try to get through the convenience part, see where we are. Alright, so.
Do you have any other, you know, sort of? Big issues that you wanted to raise our attention before we go through the application to determine its completeness?
No, I don't think so. Other than the H H E two hundred, there's a system there in place right now. It's already a gravel over it. The question is whether or not it needs to be replaced, if you're going to require that it be replaced with a concrete system. We've shown it on the plan to be replaced. To be required, to be replaced, we'll have to get it into a, like, good evaluation to. Get concrete chamber system. I'm not sure how long it's been under gravel or how much traffic it's had over.
Think in recent years, I haven't been a truck.
Okay, um, so what would, i- is the board ready to go on through the checklist to see if we can determine? If things are missing, it's to complete this check.
No, why not?
Okay, just a second. Just so you know, so, so when we go through this, if we find something that is a question mark, we'll try to. Indicate that to you, so, so you know, but we would be expecting for the next time, if it makes sense. Okay, um, so I'm on, I'm on the page thirty. Everybody there? Craig, going through the checklist. So, um, several pages, so bear with us as we go through this. So, we're looking for. An application form, whether or not it's complete, not applicable, or waiting request. So we're saying that this is complete, the package. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah. Yeah.
In agreement.
We do have that.
And the applicant's agent authorization, I think that was in there. Uh, copy of the deed.
Yeah, there, there is.
Uh, written waiver request, and that's attachment D. So I'm marking these as complete.
Yep, there is for the, um, if you let the raised.
Thank you.
D O T.
Copy of the tax map of the property.
Yep.
Uh, copy of the Kenebeck County Soil Map. Attachment F. Copy of the USGS Topo Map. A copy of the Belgrade Shoreland Zoning Map. Attachment G. Copy of flood insurance. Man. Attachment. H. Uh, copy of the National Wetlands Inventory. Copy of the main geologic survey, um, geological survey, significant sand and gravel aquifer. We have that. First, the copy of the main drinking water program map of public drinking water supplies. Here.
Yeah.
You. Um, copy of the M D O T Highway entrance and four access permit.
So that's pending, so we don't have that yet.
That's why I started that one. Actually, is that the traffic movement permit and traffic movement study that's sending?
No, the, the permit, like, and it's pending.
And then, and then for the traffic movement and traffic. Traffic movement permit and traffic movement studies that they've indicated not applicable.
Right.
The D O T hasn't indicated that they would require that.
No, those, I don't remember what the threshold is, but we're way below that threshold of what we're at.
So I'll mark that as not applicable in this case. Um, copies of other required state or local permits. The applicant has said not applicable. Um, next is a site development plan, and there is attachment M. Next is a detail to scale drawings showing location as construction. Spec, specifications of drainage features, road sidewalks, access points, driveways, parking. Traffic control features, fire control structures and public improvements, also as part of M. Complete. Documentation meets applicable state federal air quality regulatory requirements. The applicant has said not applicable, are we? In agreement. Buddy, okay. Soil erosion control plan, uh, the applicants have said that's part of the. Attachment M, where it's written. M D E P certified contractor name, that's pending.
Is that required in order to get approval, or is it just, I know that you, it needs to be certified, but you need to know that person before you can prove.
We could, uh, do it with a, for that, we could do it and have done it with a condition that construction can't start till such time as that information's provided to the code enforcement officer.
Because we realize that sometimes lining up resources might be later.
Right.
Almost just in time.
Thank you.
Next is a location of site structure, uh, listed on National Register of Historic Places. Not applicable in this case. Uh, location of main historic preservation commission archaeological sites. Not applicable in this case. And for the record. I guess I would wanna know, do we have a map, those? I, I, I know in the past mentally, I've, I've said that much of these, we, we. We know that there are some of the National Register of Historic Places in town. But it'd be good to be able to always point to that, you know, in case someone asks.
I can't remember if those are in the comprehensive plan.
It seemed like we hadn't then, but it'd be nice to be able to visit it and point to it if anybody ever asked.
Right.
Same with the preservation commission archaeological sites. Uh, next, and we may not have any in Belgrade, maybe that's why. For that part, yeah. I just don't remember. Uh, next was information needed to meet air quality standards. Applicable information to meet access to public street standards. The applicant has said, see attachment L.
So, you know, that is kind of contingent on, um, the D O T entrance permit. Yeah, so that, in my view, these pending.
Pending, yes. And then, um, next would be protection measures for historic and archaeological resources. Not applicable. Estimated quantities of flammable combustible hazard substances to be stored, handled, or generated, including waste oil and antifreeze. The applicants have said, see pages number forty nine and fifty.
So you listed, you know, the kinds of materials that you typically would find any place doing auto, uh, work, uh, but not the volumes that I saw. Uh, you mentioned that there would be some drums, but, um.
Yeah.
That's the volume.
Forty eight, see, yeah, actually that. Well, number fifty, we do, we do list some quantities there.
Okay.
Uh, no, it's on page sixteen of the application. Yeah, page sixteen, number fifty.
So are those quantities in fifty, the amount that'll be stored on the site, or just the amount that'll be generated?
Right, that's the total for, for year.
Yeah.
The anticipation. There are, I thought there was another place, you thought, you say, thought in fifty five gallon drum, right? So nothing like that, I thought there was a place we had expressed that. Oh, right, yeah, the next question down bottom of page fifty, says how these ways be properly stored? And handle on site, waste on, waste antifreeze, we store fifty five gallon drums.
So, are we to interpret that to mean that there'll be fifty five gallons of, uh, waste oil and fifty five gallons of antifreeze at any one time, or? Probably not, that's not usually how those operations go, but.
Right, right, I, I guess that's a question from Keyes.
Yeah, so about half of that would be there at the time, many ones get disposed by, or sold or given away.
Yeah, cause I, I mean, one of the findings, as you probably heard as we were going through the other application, is we gotta determine what the risk might be to groundwater. And of course, you know, in an operation like this, the risk comes from discharges from, you know, waste oil or potential discharges. And so it comes down to how much is being stored and how is it being stored and handled?
Right.
And what's the management practices are being proposed, um, that's the reason for my question. I think we could use a little bit more detail on that here.
Yeah, that would be good. So I wanna start that one. And maybe when we, we get through the checks, we can come back to this and, uh, talk about, um, maybe some examples or something. Um, next, evidence, uh, meets D E P citing regulations for oil storage. In hazard substance facility, so that's attachment J.
So, um, I, I saw that he, uh, in, at least in my packet, the email's not there. So, um, I didn't see what response you got from D E P. I don't know if that was David McCasco or who.
Yes, it was, yes. Basically, I, I sent him an email and within a day or so, he said, yes, it's like we looked at a year or so ago. And because he's, it freshens memory from looking at your, your, so he basically. Recent email that he had sent to the previous code enforcement officer, uh, from that time. Saying because it had been done prior to their rules, it was granted.
Okay, I, I guess it's just a simple matter of having that as part of our documentation.
So we'd like to get that. Please, uh, copy of the application provided to the fire chief by the planning board or CEO. So, so has this been a copy been made available for the fire chief?
Has not.
Okay.
Uh, well, not, the entire application is not, um, I did reach out to him, there's an email in there. Well, actually, that, that specific statement there. If you look at the full text, that's. That's related to some specific requirement you had. There is another place where it talks about the fire chief.
Yeah.
And I do address, basically, the fire, on a basic level, fire chief said, it, and I do have an email in there from the fire chief saying the building not changing, so we really don't care. There was a specific.
Yeah, this, this is our obligation that.
Yeah.
To make sure one part of the town is talking to the other part of the town.
Yeah, and I think, I think that, I think that one with the fire chief here is related to how much is being stored, is, is connected to that idea. Is there hazardous waste?
Yeah.
And if there's a certain volume of hazardous waste, then it's required that the fire chief somehow sign up on that. So that's why, no, I left it blank, I guess.
But, um, Hans, we still need to have a copy of the, this application's provided to Dan.
So, um, i- if you have an extra one, would you be able to provide that to him, sir? Thank you. Um, next, uh, the other information needed to meet material storage standard, uh, including bulk storage. Of combustible and flammable materials and hazard substances.
So this was sort of what I was talking about earlier, I, I think we'll need some, um. Something that talks about how, how these materials, how the barrels will be, you know, stored, or are you gonna be using secondary containment pallets? Or, you know, with best management practices, are you gonna be u- using so that you can, uh? If there, if one of the barrels does leak, you, you'll know it, um, that kind of thing, and, and, uh. I mean, it, it obviously doesn't require S P C C plan or anything like that, but, um, but just that kind of good housekeeping. And a quick, a quick question, that, does that building have a four drain in it?
I don't really answer to that.
If.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, if, if you could verify that.
Yeah.
I mean, as you probably know, they've been illegal for quite some time, but.
Right.
Um.
Yeah, I just couldn't, it, to the building, it was first time tonight, and the vehicle was parked where, but I believe there was, to see if there's a four drain there. Yeah, so I don't know.
Great.
Um, I turned the page to the next one, on page thirty two, uh, visual impact assessment. The applicant has noted that not applicable, board members, do you feel that, the, does anyone feel that? Visual impact assessment is required?
What is that, visual impact? If you're on the hillside or, or someplace where there's a view, if you're obstructing somebody's view, or that's kind of the idea. Thank you.
Yeah, impacting with you.
If we can visualize a car. Charlie's.
Uh, a plan based on IFNW Critical Areas Program, recommendations to mitigate impact on natural areas and wildlife habitat, including. Deer wintering areas, and you've indicated, see attachment M. This is the first one, so, are we, planning board, are we okay to say that that is complete, that they have something?
Yep.
And, you. Other information needed to meet natural areas, uh, natural resource protection standard, uh, see attachment N. Sufficient to be complete? Is the board requiring post-development noise monitoring and recording plan? If not, N A, it's required, mark complete. So based on the nature of this, are we requiring a noise mitigation point? I would not just require. So if not, marked not applicable, I am, information needed to meet noise standard. I'm thinking the same thing, not applicable. Exterior lighting plan. And, uh, specifications for lighting fixtures, see the answer for number thirty eight.
Page twelve, yeah. So it's gotta leave us, you know, like a residential type light over the door. And we just recently, in the last week, have received information from building supply on recommended fixture, so I get that information available.
Is that gonna be downward facing?
Yes, yes, yep, hold up, whole amount of light, uh, twenty foot high is what they recommended, downward facing. And you're not, not shedding any light toward the highlight, and not shedding, uh, like beyond the property line either.
Yeah, great.
Just, I think, no, we have an ordinance for that, too.
Pardon me?
We have an ordinance.
I believe so, you're, you're in here, it does make this, you've got the question, will this elimination from the development or use beyond any property line and see after foot candle? In the answer to that, it's no, I didn't have that answer. I didn't have the actual fixture called out at the time I submitted the application, but you have it now.
Um, is the board requiring post-development light monitoring and recording plan? Um, based on the information you've heard from Mr. Butler about the recommendation, recommendation they've received? Do you think it's required, or?
I don't.
Anybody else? No? If, I, I, I don't, based on what they're saying, I don't think will be required, so when it marked, not applicable in this case. Uh, information to meet parking standard, and that's, uh, that answer is supplied in apparently. Number thirty nine, which the answer says, two parking spaces for employees, three for customers, including one A D A space. Five hundred square foot vehicle display area, I'm sorry, five thousand, sorry. And so that, that information has been supplied, so I can say that that is complete.
I, I just have a quick question, so, um, you know, your people, you know, if they have, uh, ten customers during the day, you gotta make arrangements for them. People, they pick up the cars, you know, by time of work, or, or you're not gonna have a lot of.
Yeah, we're not gonna.
Cars sitting out there.
It also got a delivery as well.
Oh, you are? Oh, cool. I like that idea.
And Pete, your address is, no? All right, uh, next, uh, here's, I think, what you're going to perform, Mr. Butler.
Right.
Written statement from the fire chief board on capacity of the fire department to provide adequate protection, and that's, you said, see attachment O. And was that?
Yeah, that's what Hans showed us.
Okay, so that's that one, so we're good there. Uh, written statement from sheriff's department, uh, approving any proposed security measures. Um, you, you've indicated not applicable. You're not.
Right, no, it, it follows in line with number forty, which asks, will the development or use depend on Keneback County Sheriff's Department for security services? Yes, in the general sense, like everybody else does, but there's no specific security equipment that's gonna be linked to that, I assume.
And, and no specific requirements that you would have to have that resource.
Right.
On your back and top.
And then drive it by.
Yeah, okay, therefore, I agree in A. Uh, other information to meet public safety emergency services. N A has, they had marked, I guess, I would say, N A as well. Um, information to meet screening of structures, parking lots, and other non-residential uses. Uh, they've indicated to existing. Uh, they've indicated to existing six-foot-high stockade fence at South, uh, property. And so they've supplied that information, so.
So, yeah, um, if I may, um, the, uh, so. This part of town is in our comprehensive plan, uh, designated as a village district. And, and, um, and so there's different, uh, vegetative, uh, planting and screening standards, and there are. Elsewhere or rural parts of the town, if you will, rural and relative speaking, uh, and, um. And so there, in, in the ordinance, there are two requirements, um. One is for, a- again, it normally this, the objective would be to literally screen the development from passersby. But not in the village district, um, it, it is to, uh, plant some trees. Along the public road, there's actually no requirement to screen it from the butter. Um, and, uh, and for parking areas to provide a three-foot-high, uh. Planting of hedge-type materials or something like that, which. Um. So that, that's what the ordinance requirement is, um. The question, I guess, for you folks is, you know, given where the right of way is. Whether that's feasible or some variant thereof is feasible. Uh, if it isn't, then you'll need to request a waiver to that and justify.
Right, I, I would expect that M D O T will not allow us to plant anything in their right way. The only way around that, I guess, would be if we purchase portion, uh, wide enough to facilitate that. But I think we're over the right of way by about fifteen, sixteen feet.
Yeah, goes partway through the parking area.
Yeah, so that's, uh, I was almost certain that they would not allow any plants within the right of way.
Yeah. Um, if, if that's indeed the case, then, um. The, no planning between there and, and the, and, you know, the edge of the pavement. Is allowed by D O T, that would be the justification, but we would need that writing.
You need a statement from them regarding that, or just?
Uh, that would be helpful, um, but, uh.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah, no, that would be helpful, yeah.
Maybe you could ask them if you could plant some types of, uh, you know, four or five foot, three foot type of.
I'll ask.
See what they say, and.
Yeah.
You know, and if they know, that they know, but they say, yeah, yeah.
Well, and, and they may say no to, you know, planting, uh, trees every fifty feet, which that. Might only be one or two trees, but, um, or, um, because of. Safety concerns when they get larger, but, um, but they may be okay with, you know, planting some shrubs along the pa- edge of the parking area.
I mean, I just.
Yeah, I mean.
So you don't, what you're saying is you don't require it to be screened fully, but you do want something from it.
Right, and, and the relevant page in the ordinance is page thirty-one.
C one, A and B, let's see it. It says exceptions to the public screening, public road screening standards. It starts off, within village areas is depicted in the conference. Okay?
Yeah.
Hopefully that helps you.
Yes.
So just for the record, I've marked that as a, as a starred thing, as we'll get back to that. I'm thinking you'll get more information, Mr. Butler, from this, some folks. Alrighty, getting there, hanging there, right, yeah. All right, um, next, I turn the page to scale profile based on view of the proposed signs. You have, um, you can see that attachment P, so that is complete. Uh, other information to meet sign standard, uh, you said also indicate, uh, in C, so attachment P, complete. Stormwater management plan, that's attachment Q. And that may, based on our discussion, that may modify that.
Yeah, I guess it depends, maybe we can have that discussion, if we can get resolved as far as how you would want me to proceed with that, and I'll modify as necessary, I guess. We can come to some consensus on what is a reasonable approach.
Yep.
And I'll modify the plan then.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, next, other information to meet stormwater management standard, uh, again, C, uh, attachment Q. We may have to revise that a little bit. Next, uh, subsurface waste disposal cited eval from H H E two hundred, and you say that's attachment R?
Correct.
The, other information to meet wastes standard. Uh, it was under article six, section fourteen, you had said not applicable. Uh, board members, are we in agreement that that is not applicable, that this is about other waste standards out of the six? Section six, uh, fourteen.
I am.
Okay. Okay, good. Uh, groundwater quality and quantity impact assessment. Are we saying not applicable in this case? Groundwater quality and quantity impact.
Yeah.
Next, copy of deed restrictions related to drinking water and groundwater protection.
Um, that's also not applicable. But, um, I, I didn't know where else to bring this up, but there are two things I just wanted to bring to your attention, um. Make sure you know, the first, that you know about this, and that is that many of the wells in the strip of highway are contaminated with salt. From the town and DOT stand salt piles.
Okay.
And, um, and. Um. I, I honestly don't know, uh, at one point in time, DOT. Published a map and made it public on, and it was on the town website, it's disappeared, but I don't know what the latest is in their sampling, they, they routinely sample. And whether the, what they found in that well, whether they've even got permission to sample it, I don't know. But, um, the town and DOT are on the verge of entering into a contract to build a public drinking water system to replace. The contaminated wells. Um, that's probably a couple of years down the road.
Get down, be in the area of the services facility.
I think so.
Yes.
But you might, you probably want to. Talk to the town manager about that, because we're not, we're not, we're not privy.
Yeah.
But, um.
Above our pay grade, yeah.
Yeah, right, above our pay grade, but, but, uh, I know that. This late summer or so, the, uh, select board, um, I believe finalized, uh, at least finalized. For them, a contract with DOT that spells out how that project's gonna go forward. And who's gonna pay for what, um, and that has to go to the voters yet, but, um. Um, but, um. So you, you probably want to check into that, um, and, uh. Well, the, uh. The same sec- section of the ordinance is where, you know, we need to make a finding that, like, as I mentioned earlier, that there's no unreasonable. Risk to groundwater and. Which may seem kind of odd, given that it's already contaminated with salt, but, um, the, um. Uh, so I, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, at least first speaking for myself, my own, my concerns about, you know, how the. Various, um, materials will be, you know, wastewater oil, all that stuff will be handled, um. But I, I did want to make sure you knew about the salt contamination.
Thank you, as, as we were going through this, I was thinking the same thing, that this is something you probably were not aware of, sorry, clarified that. So, uh, for the time being, are we indicating for the drink water supply that would be not applicable? But we're asking that they check with the town manager about future.
Yeah, I don't think it impacts that being not app- applicable, this just seemed like the best place for me to raise.
Yeah.
That question.
But, but in terms of, but in terms of this checklist, do we say NA?
I think so.
I think. And then copy of the M D P stormwater management plan, um, they didn't keep, not applicable, um. And are we thinking that? Based on what we were initially talking about with, uh, the size of the. Thing that, would it trigger a stormwater?
Not from D E P, but, no.
Cause it's too small, right?
Right, yeah, um, and, I mean, if it did. I mean, the way the ordinance addresses that is if, if it did trigger D E P stormwater management plan, you got approved D E P. Plan, then you just submit that and we accept it. There's no point going through the process points.
Right.
But that's not the case.
Yeah. Um, next, phosphorus export control method, apparently that's in attachment Q. Uh, other information to meet water quality standard, uh, you indicated attachment Q has that. Supplemental site plan, requirements for mineral extraction, so you're not extracting minerals, so NA. And then more stuff on mining, you know, doing mining or reclaiming. So NA there, NA there, hydrogeological study of groundwater movement and quality, uh, we're seeing NA there. Written extraction, yeah, the name. Okay. Great. And then the, this next page has to do with stuff that. You're not doing.
Right.
Wind. Telecommunications tower, or anything else, mining, so, all in it. Okay. And then, oops.
Well, this, that, the document that we just went through is something that I customized, so that I can kind of keep track of it all. The next one is actually your official.
Oh, gotcha.
Your official document.
Actually, that was, that was, that was helpful though, because it directed us which appendix or, uh, attachment.
Yeah.
To look at.
Yeah, like, thank you. Um, so does the board feel we need to do anything more with the checklist?
Let's see.
We've gone through everything. So, at this point, we know that there are some things, we still need some information on, right? And we've started them, and we've taken notes, I think, probably, because there was a copy of the DOT highway entrance access permit with one. Eventually, a D E P certified contractor named the number, information to, to meet, this is about the, uh, access to public street standards. Um, and I've got four things written in a row, these have to do with flammable quantities being stored. Inciting regulations, and fire chief, they take care of that. Copy of the apple there, and then the bulk storage standard.
Now, a question on the bulk storage standard, I, I understand what you're saying, sorry, just everyday use of bulk, use of products of. I guess I wasn't sure, I think there's a definition stating what that, the quantity bulk, I guess I'm not sure where, oh, what gallons bulk comes into play and so forth. One reference, and. So I think there's a D E P reference, basically saying fifty-five gallons doesn't get into that bulk criteria, maybe it was under the act of related stuff. But anyway, we will provide, uh, something for best management practices and so forth, that you.
Yeah, what you're proposing, none of that qualifies as bulk storage.
Right, right.
It's not large enough.
I think we can take, I think we can lean some of that criteria, even if it doesn't classify as bulk, even if it doesn't need a still, can take SPCC plan. There's, there are quite a few good guidelines in there, so maybe we'll use that as a template.
Yeah, um, and Dave McCaskill is a good resource for that, he spoke a lot on, uh, with the, uh, larger. Auto repair shops and car dealers in the state. Um, they, they have their own set of B and Bs. Uh, ano- another question I meant to ask earlier, when we were talking about groundwater quality and, um. Uh, I noticed, uh, there's a outdoor home heating oil tank there.
Yes.
What's the condition of that, um? If you haven't guessed already, I worked at D E P, as it rich, as it heat.
I didn't run into you yet, I didn't run into you.
Um, but, uh, you know, D E P response between one to two failures of home heating oil tanks a day.
Yeah, as I just mentioned that in tears, yeah.
And, uh, and, uh, so I'm pretty sensitive to that.
It is a vertical, like, it is a vertical tank, on a pad, pretty sure I could tell it was concrete pad under it.
Yeah, is it actually one that's got a rating for outdoor use?
I don't know, I, I, I don't know, it looked like, I'd have to dig up, dig around it a little bit to determine that.
Yeah.
I'd have to, I didn't look at it carefully to determine the.
So the other question is, does it have any underground piping with it?
Uh, no, I don't believe so, I had above-ground piping, the tubing was above-ground in the building.
Yeah.
It's not enclosed, not protected or anything, so you're, you're free to take a look at it and.
Yeah, and then the, whether the filter is protected.
That was not.
Yeah, that, that's a big issue in terms of failures.
Yep. Anything, uh, so just check the condition of the concrete, the tank, so I think the tank would be reasonably shaped, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
It'd be super old.
I, I can't remember the slopes of that building in my head, but.
It's on the gable land.
Oh, well, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Great start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Yeah, the tank is visible from.
I, I'm sensitive to the fact, because, um, my kerosene tank, or when we had one, almost became one of the pieces that's, that's, I'm falling snow, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That would've been embarrassing.
Right, my, my parents, they did fall, they could do it.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, they put on a metal roof.
Oh, yeah.
And dang, things slid up, they're good, they're happy, and then they were.
Yeah, 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 that's, that was pros and cons to it.
Yep.
Understand what's underneath them.
Yep.
I mean, in this case, you know, it'd be more a matter of groundwater contamination potentially, but, uh, if there was a discharge, uh, in residences. Indoor air quality is a big deal for most. Real problem, especially if they get underneath the basement and the perimeter drains and all that.
Next, I turn the page and, uh. It was, I started information to meet screening of structures, parking lots, you know, that whole screening thing. And I think that.
That we talked about earlier.
Right, we talked about that, and if you have a good game plan to get information, make, like Pete said, you know, ask the question, find out what you, what, and I cannot, then go from there.
Right.
Uh, turn the page, I have two question marks on stormwater management, one was on a stormwater management plan, and the other one was. Other information to meet stormwater management standard, um. There, as we may be revisiting that one or something, or talking about that in greater detail.
Yeah, I guess, can we have a discussion to try to, I guess, get you on the right track, or how, what you're going to be agreeable to for stormwater treatment? For example, the phosphorus, I guess in my opinion, uh, since it's not making its way to Vesselonski, then I, I think we could eliminate. If you're agreeable to it, to eliminate the phosphorus requirement, that allows us to scale down the underground soil filter. Tearing up so much of the woods. You're agreeable to that.
Um, the, uh. To actually do away with that, to, with the requirement in its entirety, um. Uh, would be difficult, um, but to manage it differently than through a, a, a large-scale engineering system, I think there might be some options.
Okay.
Um. I mean, I was trying to go down, think down this road, and, and I'm not an engineer, so, um. And this is not my area of expertise, but, um, the, our ordinance provides, uh, an option. Of what it calls a simplified phosphorus method, which is basically what I was describing earlier of. And, and you were kind of alluded to, uh, of, you know, using a spreader or, or something of that nature. And discharging the stormwater to, uh, a wooded area to, um. Uh, for infiltration, uh, rather than, uh, something more sophisticated, um, the, um. Uh, rather than, uh, something more sophisticated, um, the, um. The, it, it, it has some standards, uh, and I don't know whether they, those could be met or not, uh, on page thirty-seven that. I would encourage you to look at it, depends on whether wooded, uh, if it's wooded, the standard is fifty, needs to be fifty feet wide.
Okay.
Um, the, um.
Is there a mention of slope maximum?
No, there isn't, that's what I don't understand, but. Which, you know, doesn't entirely make sense to me, but. Uh, the, um. You know, there may be less.
Let me offer this suggestion, if it makes sense, I think. I think we can keep the original, if we look at the plans, what I'm looking at here. If we keep this one here as is, to treat for phosphorus, keep it, you know, large enough to treat for phosphorus, basically, we've got to reconfigure it, but we have the same footprint, essentially. So that, basically, the new account for that twenty hundred square feet gets the robust, if you will, phosphorus treatment. And then if we look at doing what we can out here on this backside, whether it's some sort of, it sounds like maybe your ordinance has some provision for a buffer. Uh, or a, what we call a metal, a wooded buffer.
Right, right.
So I think that might be a solution there, minimize our impact.
Yeah, and, and that, you know, for a larger site, that wouldn't be an option where there's more than thirty thousand square feet of, of disturbed area, but that's not the case here.
Right.
I, I mean, others should speak up if they think I'm heading down the wrong path here, but, um.
No, I think you are heading on the right path. You know, George referenced the simplified phosphorus method and stuff, uh, on page thirty-seven, and then in our ordinance, it definitely directs people to, uh. Paragraph B development, which exceeds the threshold of the simplified phosphorus method above shall be designed by a licensed professional engineer using the procedures and standards. In the D E P publication called Phosphorus Control, Lake Watershed, a technical guide for that, I mean, new development, so there are some things you could, you know, go to. As examples, I guess. We want to provide you with enough information so you can get it done in, in a, in a way that's.
Right, I appreciate that, that's helpful.
Sure. Our ordinance is not perfect, but we definitely try.
There are not.
Yeah, as a playbook member, you know what that's all about.
Well, yeah, we have to go way ahead last, but we don't have one, it's as far as a, a site review one, and so.
We're down, what down?
We, we definitely tried to reference other experts, um, and things that, uh, don't have to have us reinventing the wheel. To point to the standards that are out there, so we've tried to do that.
Right. So, what part of bodies are up there? Great muscle pond, oh yeah, that's the key one, moral pond is a small one. So that's, uh, ninety percent of what we deal with is, or ninety, probably ninety-nine percent of what we deal with the shoreline zone.
And I think that was it for items that I had indicated, did I miss anything? So, so you have a good idea of.
Right.
Where, where to focus your efforts?
Yes, you folks may begin in two weeks.
Uh, we do, we, we mean in two weeks.
Okay, he's anxious to get moving on this, so I'm gonna see if we can get a package together for you, submit next week.
So I just want to make sure, um, how we backlog on anything else?
No, we've got it.
We've got it.
Okay. And I assume I don't necessarily need to resubmit everything again.
Fill in the gaps.
Yeah, just fill in gaps as another supplemental, eight and ten page sort of thing.
Yep.
Okay, I think we've got enough information now, but tackle this thing.
And, uh, one thing I was not starting on here, but we talked about was the email that we didn't see, that was from Dave on one attachment, was it, uh?
From D E P from.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Was it J? I'm going to remember here. She, whatever the email was, that was from David.
What are you doing?
It was, uh, uh.
So, you're going to be working in Arnold, Joe?
No. He said there was an email in C attachment J, or, so we went to attachment J, there was a map, but no email.
He said, new major graduate, that's why he's in Arnold.
You look like you're going to miss your main professional.
I did, I did. I figured it out.
You look rugged.
You like working, I'm trying to be careful, I feel like.
Yeah, I've been doing outside, you know, going official.
Yeah.
Yes, getting there.
They're from Denmark, you can still understand them, so.
Yeah. Fantastic, alright, so we've gone through, we've indicated where there are some gaps.
Yep.
You know where to focus your energies, do you have any other questions or anything to remark to the applicant? Well, are we good?
We're good, okay.
Alright, great job. You're very, very welcome, um, and, um, as always, I'd want to make sure that you're in frequent contact or in, uh, regular contact with Hans, the CEO. He is very important in this whole role, so.
Absolutely, and we've been great, great to work with him.
Fantastic, fantastic, and this is this.
Okay.
And then, are there any others over there, or do you have all you need from?
No, I'll, I'll take them both.
The big nap he was talking about.
Pardon me?
She moved the building, why you see that? I, I knew the real answer.
Yeah, well, I think I did in search of place or.
Okay, so, I think that's it, thank you so much, we'll see you again, right?
Yes. Thank you folks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, oh, yeah, that's a good question, uh, in this case, I don't know, do we need, do we tables on our patients? Can I?
Um.
They pay for it, you know.
I don't know that we typically do.
I don't think, the answer I think is that we, I don't know if we need tables, we still need more information than add. Uh, commercial, commercial.
Maybe the reason we haven't in the past, I'm not saying it isn't the right thing to do, sir, but it's because. The ordinance doesn't allow us to make a decision at this point, we couldn't approve it tonight if we wanted to.
Right.
Not only because they don't have all the information, but the process the ordinance spells out is at least a two-step process, a two-meaning process.
And, and we actually are going above and beyond that.
Tonight we were.
Yeah, we were, and it, we could talk about it more afterwards, I guess, but, but to check completeness, really, would be the role of the CEO.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right, but the CEO in this case is learning as he's going along about this, and, anyway, it, it's all, it's something I'd like to get to that. At some point.
Yeah.
Minimize our time invested on that.
Yeah, but we still have to approve it, and, or, and you need to sign the checklist and all that.
Right, right, exactly, so, anyway, so, we know there's going to be more information forthcoming. Uh, next, we have up on the agenda, the draft of the shoreline zoning permit standard condition of approval, so. George, thank you for supplying the, the draft language, um, so this, as we, I think it was introduced that, if, because we already have one standard edition, right? So you're, you're asking that we consider having a second. Um, and thanks for supplying us, so.
Yep, you're welcome.
Um, did everybody get a chance to see the draft language that George supplied?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, and do you have anything you want to say, like?
Like, not really, not beyond what I said last time, it, it's just a matter of, um. You know, setting the stage to make, uh, our permits more enforceable, uh, and, and, and maybe more importantly. Uh, to educate and make it clear to applicants and landowners that, you know, what are, what the town's expectations are that. Or, or what legally is the expectation that, you know, you get your approval for what you applied for and what the planning board approved, nothing more.
Right, and in fact, when we went through the, um, yeah, the other findings affecting conclusions of law for the. Camp Moden one, there were four standing conditions, right, and one of them would be, well, we don't have this one. What we had on that one. It was clear, we need, in my opinion, we need this to be consistent with that other one, meaning what's on the application, what's on the ground. As long as we did answer. Would be more consistent anyway, to do that, and would be sending you a first success and helping mitigate, um, some vulnerabilities that we currently have.
Well, and, and as I said in the introductory paragraph, I mean, this idea, you know, hardly a, um, a, a great wild idea. Uh, simply came to me after, you know, while discussing, talking to Richard when he was here, uh, with, you know, some of his frustrations on what he was finding in the field.
I just have one question or comment, um, it's, it's good, uh, but I wonder, it's, one of the things listed here is subsurface wastewater disposal systems. We really don't have any authority over subsurface wastewater disposals systems, it's the, uh. L P I, so if somebody wanted to go, you get a permit to build a deck or. A garage or whatever, and they want to. Redo the septic system or whatever, or make it bigger. Is there any authority for, for us require them to come back to us before they monkey with the septic system?
Well, uh, that's a good question, Rich, uh, you're right about, I mean, it isn't our job, um, it's Hans' job to approve the. You know, engineering of the system and its, you know, citing, uh, although the, the ordinance requires it to be shown on the site drawing. And its location to be on the site drawing. The question then becomes, you know, if somebody decides. You know, at some point to move their, to get approval for, say, a new building, a new structure camp with associated septic system, and they. Decide they're going to move the septic system, you know. Does that, should that require an amendment to their shoreline zoning permit? I'm not sure that does.
I'm not sure of that myself, but.
It did for Camp Moden. As permitted or as built.
On the other hand, the Jones application, they had a septic, I mean, that, you know, the septic system there and its location and. Whether it was in the right of way and, and whether traffic could go over it, was it properly designed for traffic to go over it and all that? Whether it was adequate was pretty key in that one, even though what Gary approved it, but, uh, we had to deal with it. If for no other reason, because the public brought it up in. At Great Land.
Let me suggest this, this sentence has to do with changes or deviations from the application. And then we'll go on to list a number of these things, so I think the context of the sentence is, is of all the submissions that come in, among them. Would be this thing, that normally would be an L P I, like, responsibility, but I think what the sentence is trying to say is that. If there's a plan that we have, uh, that has been approved, and then they go off and do something and they say, oh. And, you know, I'm going to go change this, you know, and it includes this thing, this, this about the subsurface wastewater.
I agree, just, you know, changing the leach field, well, that could open a larger canopy, which.
Right.
Might enhance the property in a way that they prefer.
Right, and if that's the case, I think that would be sufficient deviation that we weren't revisit back here, not, not so much.
I'm not, not pushing one, too hard, the worst that could do is somebody could challenge it and, uh, we could be. Told, uh.
Not do it.
We don't, either way, you can't do that, that's, that's, uh, not septic system, that's your, but to have it in there is not hurting us.
But it's, I, I, I know, George, I mean, the point is, is to, an approval for a plan is an approval for that plan encompassing everything.
Right.
On the plus.
But my, my thinking was, is, if somebody had got approval to build a, a camp. And the septic system, uh, was. Proved by the L P I or whatever, it was two-bedroom place, and the thing fails. And. I, I question whether they should be required to come back to the planning board to replace the system, the same thing they already had. You know, it's a general thing, and people say, oh, I gotta go to the L P I and get my, uh, septic system permit, they certainly wouldn't think they gotta go back to the planning board to replace the septic system.
They shouldn't have, they shouldn't have to, um, that's what our CEO is for. Um, so it shouldn't have to come back to the planning board, because he should be.
Agreed. Agreed, yeah, a replacement wouldn't, but if they said, oh, we want to double it in size, uh, you know, based on the previous application. Um, that was approved, I think that would warrant a revisit, right?
Well, it still would have to go through the CEO, so he's a filter, so, and why do we have any? We don't have any authority over it, and so he's, he's the one that should be taken care of it.
What if they wanted to expand, what if they're gonna add?
He should be the one deciding, uh, because it's nothing to do with us.
They added on two more bedrooms.
Then that would come in through us.
And then we would make sure that the CEO, that the L P I issued a permit for those extra two bedrooms.
So, do, do we just leave it as is?
Or, I just don't leave it the way it is.
Let me ask a question, uh, it, it's. I can't remember if you raised this, uh, Peter, uh, or who was Hans, that if somebody, um. Let's say the system did fail, or whatever the scenario, they had to replace or, uh, move their system. Um, and involved sufficient cutting of large white pine or whatever, a park, what's currently forested land. Wouldn't that still drive the need for a shoreline zoning permit? Regardless of the fact that, I mean, isn't the clearing a separate action from the construction of a, of a wastewater system?
When the clearing is the standard. Uh, my feeling is, I don't know. Where in the ordinance it would come to, they have to be at the edge of the standards, but there's no. Permit requirement to.
Oh.
Do the clear.
So, so they could clear it and not need to get a permit, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
If they violate it, they'll be in trouble by clearing too much.
Right.
But they've got to adhere to the standard, but if I went, if I had a camp on the water. And I was at ten percent clearing, and I want to go to twenty, there's no requirement in the ordinance if they come to the planning board to clear the extra. Ten percent.
Well, like I said, the only reason I, I, um, well, I took that language, I think, maybe right from the commercial development review ordinance, but, um, the, uh. Was, um, you know, if there's a change to, uh, something that we approved from what we approved on the site plan. Do we want to know about it?
I would.
Yep. I think so.
I mean, I, I don't think it changes anything in terms of the role of the local plumbing inspector.
Right.
Or the role of the planning board, or the interrelationship, but.
So every time someone replaces a septic in the shoreline, they have to come in front of us?
No.
Nope.
No.
So what's it there for then?
If they're going to expand it.
Well, if they're going to expand it, they have to come in for a permit for whatever they're expanding. Well, if they're gonna expand it, they have to come in for a permit for whatever they're expanding, don't they?
Yeah, you're right, Craig. More often than not, that's exactly what would happen, and, you know, nine out of 10 times. In fact, every time I can think of, that's exactly what happened.
And I think part of the goal of this is to say, whatever you get permitted. Whatever's on the application and then it's permitted, then that's what's, what's done on the ground.
Exactly.
Right, don't do, don't do more than that.
Yeah, and the project's complete, if there's a failure after completion of the project, we've gotta do that.
So I think the goal is to just try and clarify that, right, by adding this and.
I mean, I, I think the worst that happens is if somebody gets confused, they go talk to Hans and that's that.
Yep. And so if we, if we elect to add this to the shoreline permit, standard conditions of approval. Then this would also be consistent with the same type of language we have in the other ordinance. And I think that's, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
All right, so thank you, George, for the work on this. Are we ready to? If people willing, I'd entertain a motion to approve this to be a standard condition of approval.
I thought the. Language. Draft shoreline zoning permit standard condition of approval. As, as is.
Thank you. Motion.
Second.
And seconded, any more discussion? Thank you, George. So we'll do a roll call vote, so in favor, so Pete?
Yes.
Yeah, Sarah?
Yes.
Craig?
I don't know if the subject should be in this, no.
Do you say no? Okay, George?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so I'm, so four and one. Thanks.
So the, the next, you know, actually make this happen. It needs to be added to the findings of fact and law.
Right.
And. The. I, I don't have an original of that, so I can't do it, but I'd be willing to do the, you know, type D, if you will. If, if, if the town manager or somebody could email me that document. Unless you have the original Word version.
It's on the drive, the shared drive.
Okay, so if you could send that to me, I can make, I can add this to it and I'll send it back to you. And that way we can, you know, be part of that form from here on out.
Very good. Thanks.
Or if you, if you'd like, depending on what the board would like, if you'd like to see it one more time. Before we start using the amended form, we can do that too.
That'd be a good idea.
Yeah, probably would, probably be good to have more eyes on it than just one.
All right, thank you. Okay. Next up, CEO update LD 2003, tiny homes accessory structures, there's been some email traffic about this.
Yeah, it's been a lot, a lot.
Yeah.
I'm sure you'll peruse it. Right now, it's very incomplete. I've decided personally, I'm not spending any more time on it till after. The elections and we see what really does happen to it. Yet. A lot of it is for playing communities, bigger city, bigger municipalities.
That have zoning.
That has zoning and our shoreline zoning kind of overrules everything as far as the high frequencies. Well, instructors. We do have some tiny homes coming to town.
Really?
People are inquiring about that we have ordinances against them. Where do, if you wanna buy a, buy a lot, just put a small house on it.
Yeah.
Why not?
Yeah.
Your bananas.
Yeah.
It's your footprint, you know, living with a shack, living with a shack.
Right.
That's about it.
Okay.
Sarah?
Yeah, I got a question. When we discussed the down there, Skunk Alley there. The stream going into the village there, they did that clearing and you wanna talk to the attorney, county attorney, any updating that?
Yeah. He did wanna reopen the case. But I went and measured it, which is why I didn't follow up with the attorney. I measured 196 feet of pin to pin. So called the attorney, he said, yes, let's redirect this to the planning board, however, it was already outside the appeal with it. I went to the deed. And found the deed 201 feet, that's what's listed on the deed. With one pin being in the face of a large tree. Of course, trees grow and move and. Push the earth around, so I'm, I'm guessing one pin was kind of sloppy in the ground. It probably had fallen over and somebody jammed it back in, and that could have happened two or three times over the past couple decades.
Sure.
So. The deed marks says it's 201, so we dropped it.
Okay, wow.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's one you wanna go to the mat on.
Yeah, absolutely not. Because the deed is a legal document, it's been registered. That's it.
So did you hear all what he said?
I, I didn't hear all, I don't know how to hear it. So what's, what's the registry of deeds there?
201.
201, okay, that's, that's right. You actually measured 96.
But the pin had been moved around.
Right, so we gotta go by what's down the registry of deed, okay, I, I got that. So they, they need to come to us. And get the application, right?
They, no. There's a conforming lot. So the CEO's permit stands.
Yeah, it wasn't, it was a permit that he could issue under the ordinance.
Okay. The fellow sitting here, he, he left.
Yeah, yeah.
He needed to be. For, and he, he. We gotta, you gotta communicate, he probably wanna communicate, give him a call.
Yeah, we, we've talked about it.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
How, how was his response?
He said, I believe his response was, my brother-in-law is gonna be. Because he didn't look at the deed, he did, he measured himself.
Oh.
Apparently several people measured themselves, that's why the, the local scuttlebutt was, it's non-conforming, but it actually was.
Okay. So, so. What about the clearing, you know, the, the meandering path going down there?
There's no path at this time. I've measured shoreline to the closest cut tree was 80 feet.
Right, so that's, that's an issue, isn't it?
No. 75 feet's the issue.
For, for a lot that's wooded. And, and between, in, when you're back 100 feet, you wanna go down to the shore, go down, go down to the shore on a wooded lot. You have to kind of meandering path down, you can't go.
But there is no path. Right now it's natural.
Well, before it was hot, it was wood. Right? Am I, am I, right?
I, I don't know, I have no idea.
It's, 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 it's a vacant lot, there's no building on it, never was a building, all that. And if you wanna, and you wanna put a building on it, you can do it, right? But between, you know, you, you can put a structure on there, you gotta be back a new structure, right? You have to be back 100 feet, right?
That's correct.
Right, between 100 feet and the water, you know, you get, you, the only way you get down there is a meandering path, it says in the law. So, and it's, so what? And they just, you can go clear a tree.
They didn't clear trees to the water. There is no path, it's very rough.
Well, there were usually a bunch of trees there.
There are trees, and I cut out the 100-foot spot for the house with some.
Right, yeah, right, I saw, I, I did get on it and I saw a big, a lot of big steps between 100 feet and the water. And, you know, big stuff like that, it was a big tree there, you know. You know, they took out some big trees and they did it, you know, more than the six or eight. You know, whatever the law says, right, it's about, you know, 30 feet of water, it's, it took a lot of substantial treatment. One, one, one unfortunate is because. People will be coming up in the springtime, they're gonna see this and they're gonna, you know, they have this app. Yeah, so, you know, we gotta be careful, so let's, let's review. What the, the ordinance says, we got time to go through that now or what, until later? When, hold on for next meeting?
Yeah, maybe next meeting if you don't mind.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I need to make sure we get through some meeting minutes.
I'm a vacant lot.
We're not talking about that wooden camps that where the people were.
No, 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 it was, they had other.
Red Oaks Lodge.
Red Oaks.
No, Skunk Alley, you know, the old Skunk Alley, you can get on there, and remember Fred used to live down there?
Fred Zinker?
Yeah, right. Zinker sold his place, you know, there was, next to Fred Zinker, a wooded lot there.
To the, to the, toward the south or east?
Towards the.
Not toward the lake.
Toward, you know, towards this.
Village.
Village, yeah.
Towards the village?
Yeah. Take, take a ride down. It looks like it, right?
First I, I probably wasn't here at the meeting you guys talked about.
He used to build wood. And we can take another look at it, I need to take a look, another look at the ordinance on that. The vacant lot and. And a new building going in, which is fine. Right side, but you gotta pay attention to how you get down to the lake.
So, so Pete, the discussion you wanna have at the next meeting is to, for us to review what the, the tree, the vegetation clearing standards are in the ordinance. Whether it applies to this lot or some other lot.
I mean, what you're talking about is when you enter the lot, the very far side of it. Cut back and that's where they're planning to put the well.
No, I'm talking about between 100 feet and the, and the lake.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause along the stream. I mean, I, I, I believe they, they were still, they did clear a little extra just to get a drill rig in.
Right, but, but we, again, they really cleared out quite, quite a wide path, okay?
I don't think they exceeded the setbacks for around the house.
Pardon?
I do not think they exceeded the setbacks for around where the house is gonna be placed.
Oh.
And they have not cleared a path to the lake, it's just. Where it was, I mean, I measured the closest stump to the lake and it was 80 feet.
Well, there were, there were a lot more, yeah, all I can remember is.
You're welcome to do a marquee spray painted.
Okay, I think we can kind of review the ordinance, we'll get, come back and then we can make a decision. And maybe, maybe we can take a visit down there. Yes, same visit too.
Maybe so.
Yeah.
I think reviewing the ordinance is always good.
Sure.
Yeah.
I just, you know.
If it's gonna become an enforcement thing, I really wanna encourage it to be in the hands of the CEO.
I understand that, but I just wanna be clear that, you know, come summertime, you're gonna, we're gonna get a lot of feedback, pushback from people coming in and seeing this.
Absolutely.
So that's.
Right.
We've already had pushback.
Well, you, you, we'll get more.
Mr. Shapoo, I've had a couple of people.
Well, some people come back, a lot of pushback, so. Now, just, I just been around, shoreline zone, so.
It's a valid concern and it's a good, good point, Rich, would you?
I just got one thing, directed to Hans, I guess. Yeah, you can look around, I don't think that that map that we pulled out behind the cabinet. Is the most recent version of the town shoreline zoning map. I don't know if you can ask. The girls out front, the boys and girls or whatever out front, or whether you can look in. Pointers of your office, see if you can find some kind of a. More up-to-date shoreline zoning map, but. I'm thinking, if it's not the right one, we gotta find it, but we gotta get a production of it. I know we were going, at one time, we were going through amendments to the shoreline zoning map and I can't recall. I assume we got a big draft anyway, version from. Sewell Company or C I, C A I Company that sold the mapping from Sewell, but. Anyway, it's, it's, it's not good to be in a position where we can't.
Well, that map is a legal document.
Well, yeah. I'm sure we know what we're looking at.
Right.
We need, we need to know.
We need, we, that's a real need, not just the one.
You may not be able to find something, but if you can look, that would be very, very.
I'm glad you mentioned the purchase of Sewell by the C A I, cause I forgot about that.
Yeah, I knew they'd been purchased, I just couldn't remember the name of the firm.
Right, right, exactly.
And I'm not sure it was just their mapping section or the whole Sewell Company, cause I think there's. I mean, it doesn't mean they have to change the name, but I think if you go through downtown Old Town, it still says Sewell Company.
Yeah.
Okay, but it may have been just a mapping services.
Well, if town pays for services. Be diligent there. Figure out kind of what year it is, what, you know, what. Figure out, you know.
Yeah, we can at least figure out what we paying for, if we paid for a map. And if we.
We did.
If we didn't get a final version, we need to carry that through.
Well, you may recall, we went around the horn multiple times with Danny Ketchel about that very issue.
Right, right.
My recollection is we got what we paid for, even though we didn't get what we needed.
Right.
Yep. Danny's still, Danny's still in town, right?
No.
No, he's, he's someplace close, half the, uh, United States.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, he's, uh, RB.
Really?
Yeah.
We should, we should be doing that.
Let's get through the minutes and then we can go do RB.
Sorry, I know everybody wants to keep going, but I got one other thing before we do, well, we can do it after the minutes, if you'd like it.
Go ahead.
So in the course of reviewing the new commercial development review ordinance. I real, and fortunately, it didn't matter to how they completed it, but I realized. At least I, I don't know about the rest of you, I don't have the up-to-date version of that ordinance. We requested it once before and we still don't have it, I don't have it.
I don't have it.
And, and what changed, of course, were the phosphorus standards. And fortunately, the phosphorus standard for Mezalonsky Lake did not change since we amended it last, and it was approved by the voters last March.
Which. You don't have the March 19, 2022 version?
No. You do, Rich, though.
I do, but I got it here, it wasn't given to, it was given to me when I came into the town office for something. Back quite a while ago.
Oh, cause we had requested it for, for the entire planning board.
Right.
Did the other, the rest of you get it?
She indicated kind of to me that this is, you're here, I'll give you your copy now. I assumed.
So.
I may not have the update we needed. But.
A- anyway, not only do I not have, and apparently most of us not have the right version. Uh, the one on the website is wrong too. Uh, so, you know, an applicant comes in, what do they look at? They look at what's on the website.
Right.
And, you know, fortunately, in this case, it was, it didn't matter.
Yeah.
Cause the, you know, the phosphorus standard for Mezalonsky, 0.068 pounds per acre. Was before and continues to be now, but for other lakes like Great Pond where the water quality is declining, it went down.
Yeah, the applicant pays the guy, whether what he did, ask him back.
That all needs to be sorted out, that's embarrassing.
Mine actually has a seal, I can feel the bumps.
Ah. Ah.
Oh, the stamp.
Alright, so what, maybe what I can do is, uh, ask Lauren or maybe Mary or somebody. To prepare copies for us all, and I don't know who would update the website, I don't want you to use that place.
Website, well, maybe somebody in the office does that.
I can come in.
You have a machine now that here that you can scan the whole thing and make it work.
Isn't that nice? Really? Alright, so I will, I will take that.
Did you, have you? All of a sudden, it just came back to me, did you talk to her already about the secretary?
Uh, I came in to talk to her about it, Lauren was out due to COVID, so I couldn't ask her.
Oh, she had COVID?
Yeah, apparently, and so I passed along the message to Mary to ask that. That that priority be given to, you know, hiring that role.
Yeah, that's good, great, thank you.
Well, and, and I hope that Lauren is doing better, I don't, I don't know if she had symptoms or was feeling.
Well, there's a lot of people in town office said it, COVID.
Yeah.
We had two, yes, we have two.
Yeah.
We did, we'll have to cover that in a minute.
It's like Richard's ready to go.
Oh, I was going to say, I'm not anything to do with the minutes, I wasn't here the last meeting, if that's the only thing left.
The Phillies are playing, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah.
Got their asses kicked last night.
I think they'll get their asses kicked before the whole thing. Anyway, is there anything on there left except minutes?
Just minutes. Thank you, thank you, Rich, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Alright, thank you, thanks for that point about the updated. Commercial development review ordinance. Alright, so are we okay to move on to minutes?
Yep.
Now it's getting late, everybody.
Yes.
Okay. So I got this, so everybody, thank you. Can we go over and see October sixth first?
This is already done, this.
Oh, these are already done?
That's the final part of it.
So just the twentieth?
Okay, thank you, alright, thank you for that.
I, I, yes, it is, I know that I misspelled Peter's last name.
Peter Sargent?
Yes.
I figured it was.
I hope, hopefully that's the only thing.
Spelled it like the, like the rank in the army?
Yeah.
Everybody, chance to go through the minutes?
Yeah.
Um, Pete, do you have any edits or comments?
Uh, yes, that's my name. It's a. I'm just teasing you.
I know.
Alright, so thank you for that. I didn't see anything else that I wanted to. Edit. George, we haven't missed much, we're just starting to go through the idea of, if there are any edits to the. Yeah, understood, got you. Do you have any, any edits?
No, very good, well done.
Well done, so thank you. Craig, do you have any minute, edits to the minutes?
No, I'm all good.
Alright, thank you, I would entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes of.
And seconded, thank you, any more discussion? No, all those in favor, so Pete? Yeah, Sarah, Craig?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Me too, five in favor and none opposed, done, deal. Alright, I think that is it, everybody, thank you for a long evening, I'm just taking a motion to adjourn.
I, I will put in motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor, Pete?
Yeah.
Sarah?
Yeah.
Yeah, Craig?
Yes.
Yes.
Me too, five in favor and opposed, we're done, let me make sure to turn off the recording.
Hope you feel better, Craig.
Yeah, just wishes, yeah, and hopefully, hopefully you can feel better and get out in the woods.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah.
Thanks, Sal.
Hang tough, man.
You haven't get your buck yet?
No, yeah, no.
Send the pictures.
Good night.
Alright.